Our meeting is the Bridgewater Township Zoning Board of Adjustment Regular Meeting for Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. Adequate notice to this meeting was provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA, colon, four dash six, specifically on January 15th, 2025. Proper notice was sent to the Courier-News and the Star-Ledger and filed with the Clerk of the Township of Bridgewater and posted on the Municipal Bulletin Board. Please be aware of the zoning board of adjustment policy through public hearings. No new applications will be heard after 9:30 PM and no new testimony will be taken after 10:00. If you're able, please rise for the salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, Maria. If we can have a roll call, please.
Chairman Fuze?
Here.
Mr. Waidao?
I'm here.
Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
Mrs. Amin?
Yeah.
Mr. Bonjourno? He's not here for the record. Mr. Gajaski?
He's on his way, so we'll call him out when he gets here, as is Mr. Vesio.
Mr. Fresco?
Yep.
Mr. Kulak?
Here.
Mr. Gabbit?
Here.
Mr. Allah, Board Attorney?
Here.
Mr. William Burr, Board Engineer?
Here.
And Ms. Catherine Samard, Board Planner?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to open up the meeting to any member of the public that would like to speak on any land use matter that is not on our agenda this evening. You can come up. Come on up. You just have your name and address. Good evening.
Good evening. Kevin Ainsworth. I live in Martinsville at 76 Hillcrest Road. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I just wanted to describe very briefly a situation related to steep slope ordinances that you ought to take into account when somebody comes to you for a steep slope variance. About 10 years ago, you granted variance, this board, I don't believe any of you were on it at the time, nine or 10 years ago, for construction at 78 Hillcrest Road, which is just east of my home. That construction is still ongoing, perhaps in part because of difficulties with a steep slope. But about little more than two weeks ago, on the 22nd, while they were constructing what appeared to be the cisterns that were to catch the runoff water, they had an excavator down the hill on this steep slope and they rolled it. Its treads are in the air. Its heavy end or top end is downhill. It's about a 40% slope. They spent all day on the following Monday with two large, what looked to be tow trucks for semi tractor trailers trying to write this thing. They were unable to. I have not seen any effort in the last two weeks to write it. It's still there. Treads in the air. It may be leaking fuel. It may be leaking oil. It's not made to be upside down. I don't know how long it's going to take. As I said, the construction's been going on for more than six years at this point. And so when somebody comes to you and says, "We want a steep slope variance," there ought to be some requirements on how to manage this type of situation so it doesn't develop into further problems down the road.
First of all, thank you for coming. You're at just with 76?
Yes.
Construction's at 78?
Correct.
Currently an overturned?
Excavator. It's about 100 yards from the road down the hill.
Bill, anything we can do about this?
I know the PD and the Construction Department are aware of it.
Yep.
I don't know what the current status is. Actually, I'm surprised to hear that it's still in that current condition. So tomorrow, we'll make some phone calls.
All right.
For sure.
And not every town has steep slope ordinance. We're actually fighting to keep ours because other towns have lost it court. I take it extremely seriously. I know other chairmen have leaned on it as well. It's invaluable because the steep slope ordinance effectively decreases the size of building anywhere there's steep slopes. And I know this board, we really fight when people come looking for those types of variances and it's an important part of our toolkit, as we'd like to say. So take this seriously. I'll look into it. I'll personally look into it. I'll make sure Bill follows up on that and we'll let you know.
Well, I appreciate that. I hadn't heard that there were challenges that these ordinance were falling away.
A warrant township removed there is about six years ago because they lost a nasty battle in court, so they just got rid of it and I'm not ready to do that.
I'm a lawyer, by the way.
All right.
And in the late 90s, I litigated up to the New York Court of Appeals, a steep slope ordinance in a town in New York, and then moved into this township in late 97. And there were a lot of variance applications over the years before this one was finally approved.
The case tonight actually had a steep slope component to it.
Okay.
So if you want to stick around, you can listen to it. It's interesting.
Thank you. I'd like to go have dinner.
All right, good luck. Thank you for bringing this to our attention and I will personally make a phone call in the morning and an email.
Very good.
You got it. Good night, sir. Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close that portion of the meeting. We're going to adopt two sets of minutes. Let's do April 22nd, 2025. I know Mrs. Amin has given me some changes. I will pass them along to Maria. Anyone else? Comments or changes to April 22nd? All right, can I have a motion, please?
I move.
All right, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Fresco.
Mr. Waidali?
Yes.
Mrs. Amin?
Yes.
Mr. Fresco?
Yes.
Mr. Gajaski?
Yes.
Let the record reflect 706, Mr. Gajaski.
I had to throw that in.
Mr. Kulak?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbit?
Yes.
And Chairman Fuze?
Yes.
All right, now we have May 13th, 2025. I have again the changes from Mrs. Amin. I'm going to pass them to Maria after this is finished. Any other changes or comments? May 13th, 2025.
I move.
All right, that was Mr. Waidali. Move. Do I have a second, please? Mr. Fresco.
Mr. Waidali?
Yes.
Mrs. Amin?
Yes.
Mr. Fresco?
Yes.
Mr. Kulak?
Yes.
Mr. Vesio?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbit?
Yes.
And Chairman Fuze?
Yes. All right, we have no resolutions. Do we have any, anything we need to announce? I think we're good. All right, we're up to date.
We're good to proceed.
All right, Bridgewater, self-storage, 351 Route 28. Come on down.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. How are you?
Good evening.
Let me just collect my notes for a second, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just give the board a brief reminder about this continued application that was previously before the board in March of this year. Just an appearance for the record, please. Sure. Matthew Capizzi, on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you.
This is a project site at 351 Route 28 and 322, Route 22, known as Block 400, lots 1 and 2. It's an application for site plan approval, two use variances and a bulk variance, as well as some site plan waivers, that seeks to consolidate these two lots into one new building lot and redevelop the property with a self-storage building. We were previously before the board on March 25th of this year. At that time, we heard testimony from our civil engineer, Matthew Kunsman, and collected feedback from the board and from members of the public. Since then till now, we have supplied the board with essentially a wholesale modified plan set from both our architect, engineer, traffic engineer, and so forth. That revised submittal was filed with the board on June 27th of this year. And the main takeaway of the revisions, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, was essentially we reduced the height of the building, essentially took a floor off the building and amended the grading. So one of the conversations that we, focal points that we had during the March meeting was, how did the building sit in relationship to the elevation of Route 28? At that point in time, we were essentially, I think, about 45 feet or so from Route 28. And now from that vantage point, it's been reduced by 10 feet. So although we were not seeking a height variance then and we are not seeking one now, as you look upon the building from Route 28, it is now 10 feet lower in elevation. By virtue of some of the adjusted grading that we made, we were also able to increase the amount of existing vegetation that could be retained, as well as increase the amount of new vegetation to be proposed. We also changed the manner in which circulation is made into the site. We previously had some drive-up storage areas along the front elevation, along Route 22. A majority of those have been deleted and the parking in the front yard has been deleted, allowing for more green space and vegetation along Route 22. So in all, we believed that we were responsive to a majority, if not entirety, of the board's comments made during that time. Also, from the architectural perspective, we added some glazing to both the front and rear elevations to have the building have a closer appearance to one that's more of an office building type. And some other modifications were made to the architectural components that the team will speak to this evening. Just by way of a summary of the relief that's required, again, preliminary and final site plan approval. We are in a C3 zone, which allows for commercial uses, however, does not provide for self-storage as a permitted use, so we need a D1 use variance to allow self-storage at this location. We are seeking an FAR variance. The FAR variance that was previously sought was at, I just want to get the numbers correct, was at 0.5% under the modified scenario. It's been reduced to 0.44%, a reduction of approximately 15,700 square feet of building area. As far as the bulk variances, we require essentially one bulk variance as it pertains to the building. That's just the front yard setback along Route 22, where 200 feet is required and 100 feet is proposed. The building, as it presents itself, to Route 28 is conforming. The side and rear yard setback is conforming. The building height is conforming. There are some variances relative to the loading area, as far as number of loading spaces and the size of the loading spaces, that remain unchanged from the March presentation. And a variance as to signage, which remains unchanged since the March presentation. And again, just by, to provide some additional context, we are also well below the maximum approved coverage. The zone allows for 51.3%. We were previously at 36.2% and that has been reduced to 32.7%, approximately 18.6% below what's the maximum allowed. And the building height, 45 feet is the maximum allowed. We were previously at 36.54 feet. Under the modified building, we're at 31.6 feet. Again, that's an average building height calculation. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that's a summary of the application. We do have testimony from our civil engineer, architect. We have an operations person here with us this evening, traffic engineer and planner.
All right, good stuff. Before we dive in, a couple of things. I know legally, we received your plans before they were due, but practically, you know, when we have people taking vacations, they're not able to write reports. So what I'm going to ask you to do tonight is anyone that does testify, they're going to have to come back at the next hearing. I want this board and members of the public to have the benefit of our engineer's report to ask those questions. So, you know, I didn't want to cancel tonight's meeting by any stretch, but we still have to afford this board and members of the public the ability to read that engineer's report and then question and cross-examine any witnesses that testified tonight. So I want to make sure that's okay with you.
Certainly. Understood and every member of the team will be back.
All right, and I went back and I watched the last hearing from March 25th on YouTube and we finished up that hearing with Mr. Sweeney asking for some renderings. And I'm paraphrasing, but and I agree with him, is that we didn't really get a good feel of the project and I know it's changed since, but he was looking for renderings. And I know we had talked about the other storage application on Route 22 West in Voscler, where they did a real nice job presenting actual graphical simulations from different perspectives, different viewpoints, that gave the board a very clear understanding. So I guess that's the first thing we're looking for. You know, we want to clean up the business in the last meeting and Mr. Sweeney ended with that. And then the second was, I ended on the note, I want to make sure that you reviewed that resolution in that case and that on the record, you can confirm that and that our board attorney has given you that resolution.
Yep, I have the chimney rock resolution. I reviewed it. Certainly the conditions that were enumerated in there are similar to what we had discussed in March.
Yeah.
And our operations person is prepared to make many of those conditions part of her direct testimony.
We had a pretty full room that night and we have a pretty full room this night. I don't know if you've met with the neighborhood or had any opportunity to get feedback, but again, I want to encourage that going forward, that you meet with these folks. This is their neighborhood, their homes, and anything that happens here, you know, I think this would be a good place for them to give input. And, you know, if you want to have private meetings with the neighborhood, I always encourage it. I know that was a big help in the other storage case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You got it.
As far as the renderings are concerned, I apologize, we weren't able to get them in advance, but our architect does have them for discussion this evening as exhibits. And certainly, we recognize that we will, coming back before the board at a later date. So in the, in the event that those need further discussion or to be elaborated one way or the other, we certainly will take the opportunity to do that as necessary.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, if, I was planning on having my civil engineer come up first, but if you'd like to dive into the architecture, we can go there.
Your case. You pick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I can have Mr. Kunsman come up and go through the revised civil set, please.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you will give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Yep.
And your full name for the record, please?
Matthew Kunsman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kunsman, can you just give the board the benefit of the preparation revision date of the plan set we're going to discuss this evening?
Sure. The revision date is May 28th, 2025.
Thank you. And on the screen there, we have a colorized version of your site plan. Is that correct?
Yes, so I'll mark this exhibit in the top right corner.
I think, Matt, we're up to A4.
I had it marked as A3 under my notes, that this would...
Oh, I'm sorry. Next exhibit is A3. Yeah, sorry, I'm looking at A3. A3. And just for the record, Mr. Kunsman, would you just tell us what that is?
Sure. So I just marked this exhibit in the top right corner, A3. It is a site layout plan rendering prepared by Bowler dated June 26th, 2025. And north is to the top of the page for your reference. So this is a colorized site plan of our, our colorized site plan that was just submitted as part of our application. It has the landscaping also superimposed as well. So I'll just describe what we've changed from the last presentation. So the major changes was adding a substantial amount of landscaping to this project. So we were able to accomplish that by regrading the proposed conditions of the site. So in existing conditions, the eastern side of the site is much higher than the western side. And previously, we had the finished floor of the building all at one grade. Now we're stepping the building, so the eastern side of the building will be at a higher elevation, 10 feet higher than the western side of the building. So two finished floors. So that resulted in us being able to relocate the proposed driveway to the northwest corner of the site, coming from Route 22. Previously, this driveway was in the same location on Route 22 with a curb opening, but it wrapped along the fringe of the site towards the northeast corner. So that had a two-way drive aisle associated with the previous coverage and less room for landscaping and also had more tree removal. So with this revision, we were able to eliminate that drive aisle, provide more landscaping and provide more trees as well. So with that revision, we did have to revise architectural plan, which our next witness will get into, but just high level, we relocated the office to the northwest corner of the building. So as you enter into the site, there are three parking spaces located outside the gates. Then you have the office in the northwest corner. In a similar fashion, you would circulate one way around the site as well. The site is secure with the gate on each corner of the building, which people are renting in this facility, have a code to access to, similar to what was testified previously. And then in the rear of the site along Route 28 as well, we did reduce the drive aisle width to provide some more buffer and landscaping room from the Route 28 frontage. We did also reduce the number of parking spaces provided. Previously, we had parking on the northern facade of the building, within the front yard setback of 100 feet. That did require a variance previously. We were able to eliminate that, reduce the number of parking spaces and increase the landscape area as well. So we are complying with the number of spaces proposed of 15 spaces.
Since the building scale came down, what's the required number?
15 spaces are required and 15 spaces are proposed.
Thank you.
Also, as mentioned before, we did eliminate some roll-up doors from the building. So along the northern facade of the building, we eliminated some roll-up doors and also along the southern facade along Route 28, we eliminated roll-up doors from the exterior of the building and from that drive aisle. Those two drive aisles on the north side and the south side of the building, they do have grade change, so that's why we eliminated those roll-up doors. They're climbing grade from the western side of the building to the northern side, approximately 10 feet in grade change. Since we were able to change the grades on the site, we also were able to reduce the building height when compared to the Route 28 and Bogart Drive intersection that we were talking about previously at the last hearing. So the grade at the road at this intersection of Route 28 and Bogart is approximately elevation 128. In the original application, with the top of the parapet elevation compared to that grade of the road was 53 and a half feet. Now with this revision, with the revised grading, we were able to reduce that to 43 feet when compared to that intersection. And the township code for building height is 45 feet is what's permitted. And that's when you compare the four corners of the building. So we are complying with the building height when compared to the four corners of the building and also when you compare it to Route 28 as well. Since we have to, we reduced some of the building, we did reduce the FAR variance that we're requesting. Previously, it was 0.5 and now we're proposing 0.44. And then for landscaping, we talked at pretty great depth about tree replacement. So I am pretty happy to say we are complying with the tree replacement requirements in this revision. So previously, we were removing 209 trees. Now we're removing 166 trees. So it's 43 less trees we're removing from the site. We are also replacing the 166 trees with 262 new trees, which is nine trees over the tree replacement requirement. When counting the existing trees on site, there are 365 trees and what the proposed trees that we're planting, there's going to be 461 trees on the site. And I believe, lastly, I did have a chance to review the planner's review letter that we received today. There was a comment about the buffer along the Route 28 frontage. So as you can see in this rendering here in A3, we are planting a substantial amount of trees in that area of the Route 28 frontage, on the western side of the site where there's a gap in the landscaping. The eastern side of the site is the existing tree line, so we're maintaining the majority of that. But we are requesting, I believe it's a waiver for the types of trees that are proposed in that buffer, where the requirement 75% have to be evergreen and we have 44% evergreen. The town requirement is that those trees be planted at 6 feet height. We are also planting at 8 feet height, so a little bit taller than initial plantings as well. The evergreen trees that are proposed within this buffer are double-staggered rows, which is, which meets the township code requirement. And we didn't want to propose four rows of evergreens because when they start to grow, they'll grow into each other and then less airflow, it can introduce disease and stuff to that. So we felt that having a double row on the bottom and also a row on the top of the site along the parking would provide a nice buffer onto the residents across Route 28. So with all these revisions, we have increased the landscaping substantially from what was previously provided. We complied with the tree replacement requirements. We're able to eliminate some variances as well.
Can I ask you a question while you're on the landscaping here? I talked about Catherine brought it up too, is if I'm on 28 and I'm a resident and you're heading east, you loaded up at the west end and then again, you're point, move it over to where it's empty there, why can't you put a double row in there? Because you're heavy loaded in on 22 where there is no residents, it's all just traffic.
Sorry, can you describe again where there's no...
What you're talking about before, Kath brought up in the report, was that you have only one buffer of landscaping on 28 going east.
Okay.
Why can't you make that a double? Because you're heavy loaded on the west end where your pointer is right now and you're heavy on the 22 where it's all just commercial traffic. Residents are on 28 and you only have one line there. I know they grow.
Oh, they're, sorry. I could have described way better. This area right here?
Right there.
That's existing, that's existing vegetation that's going to remain. That's a pretty heavy buffer in existing condition. We didn't want to touch that.
Okay. So you feel that adding that row there will be sufficient to protect the neighbors from...
Yes, and our architect will be able to show some cross-sections as well and perspectives that shows what that buffer will look like.
Okay, all right.
Could you go back, excuse me, to the beginning of your testimony where you talked about how the building itself was changed in such a way as to create two different levels? Am I repeating that correctly?
Yes.
I didn't understand what, what that's going to look like and how it impacts either the way the building looks or the utility of the building moving forward. Can you explain that a little better or do you want to wait for your architect?
I think our architect will be able to explain the, how it functioned internally better. Yes, I'll defer to William.
Second question is, you talked about the elimination of some roll-up doors, which means that some remain, true?
That's correct.
Okay. So if I'm pulling in from Route 22, I make a left, I'm heading east and I'm going to see some roll-up doors there and maybe that's my unit. What do I do? Just put my car right in front of it, open the roll-up door and have access to the unit? In other words, I'm not really parking or I am parking? I don't know.
At the roll-up doors, yes, you could park right outside of it, but we have designed the drive aisles to be able to allow for our car to be parked there and then another one be able to drive around.
So if I, if that's my unit and my car, pickup truck, whatever, is there, there's sufficient space for somebody else to pull in and go around?
Yes.
Okay. And it may be the purview of the architect, but how many of those roll-up doors are going to be on that side of the building? He or she would know?
Yes, they would know.
And similarly, along the, I guess, the south side of the building, and that got a little confusing because you said there's an elevation change as well and somehow that impacted the functionality of the roll-up doors? Maybe I didn't understand it.
So along the south side, where my cursor is, along the portion of the building that's really like parallel to Route 28, there's approximately like a 10-foot grade change in that area.
From where to where?
From each corner of the building.
Okay.
So...
It drops 10 feet from where your cursor is to the, what I'm going to call the west side of the building.
Correct.
Okay.
And similar on the north side as well, so those areas...
And how does that impact then, and maybe I misheard you, but how does that impact the functionality of those doors?
Oh, there will not be roll-up doors where there is significant grade change.
Okay, and so that means that no roll-up doors at all on that side or some roll-up doors?
Our architect will be able to show the elevations that have where those roll-up doors are exactly.
There will be some.
Yes.
Okay. And because you're saying that while the grade change is significant, it's not consistent or it's not a gradual decline, so to speak?
It's, it's consistent, but then it flattens out as it gets to the corner of the building. So there's opportunity to have flatter areas where the roll-up doors would be able to function.
And will there be testimony to describe how the roll-up door units function in the sense of how long somebody's going to be parked in front of their unit on average? How those units are used and accessed? Right now, it seems to me with roll-up doors and no parking and no sort of loading area, we've just got to rely on that, the good nature of the one car to stay close to the roll-up doors to give room to the other car that might be driving by.
We'll have operational testimony on that.
Okay, thank you.
I have one, one small question.
I have one small question. Is Route 22 higher than this property or is it lower than this property?
Both Route 22 and 28 are lower than the property.
So the driveway that is coming from Route 22?
Give me the.
How much does it slope up or down or how many feet is it?
Just open up my grading plan. The driveway of Route 22 is at approximately elevation 123. And I think it said, the intersection at Bogart is at elevation 128, but both roads do change grade quite a bit. And the one, the western side finished floor is at 134 and a half and the eastern side's at 145, sorry, 144 and a half. So, or 145, sorry. So yes, there is a 10-foot grade change between the two floors. And yes, it is higher than the driveway of Route 22 by 10 feet roughly.
And then the property is higher on the east side and lower on the west side, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So the water drains into that catching area?
Yes, so we are proposing a similar stormwater management approach from the original site plan as part of this revision. We do have the grading, pitch, so the perimeter landscaping maintains a similar drainage pattern where it either goes through Route 22 frontage or Route 28. On-site, the water is captured through a system of inlets and pipes that gets routed to the infiltration basin on the western side of the site, which ultimately discharges to the western side of the property.
Thanks.
In the area that we have existing trees that are to remain on Route 28, do you know the approximate, like tree canopy height that we currently have there? And how does that compare to the building height that's proposed?
Yes, the architectural elevations that'll be presented will show all the trees. We looked at them to verify that it's representative of the canopy heights. So some of those trees, or those trees will be shown on those elevations that will be presented.
Okay. And the heights of those trees are accurate, so it's actually there?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just one question on the site plan. You're showing the emergency access for the fire department?
That's correct, sorry, I missed that. So on the southeastern portion of the property, we are proposing a fire access with grass pavers to access the site from Route 28 to the drive aisle in the northeast, or the southeast corner of the building. It's a similar location of the existing driveway that's there today that accesses the office building.
That would be exclusively for emergency services?
Correct.
Thank you. The drainage system, I know you had just touched upon it a moment ago, but how did that modify as a result of the revisions we made to the plan set?
Yes, so one of the recommendations from board engineer was to elongate the basin rather than have it more rectangle or square shape. And that helped us maintain some of the existing vegetation and trees and reduce the amount of disturbance we had on the site for tree removal. So we were able to elongate the basin from east to west to reduce the amount of trees we're removing.
As far as additional buffering, you're now showing some solid PVC fencing along the west side of the site.
That is correct. So the western parking spaces will have a solid PVC wood, or fence, brown fence, and then it'll also wrap around the Route 28 frontage along the building.
Thank you. And if you could just give us a review of the bulk table items that changed since the last hearing today?
Sure.
While you're looking for those, can you just tell me where your drainage basin is? That's where there currently is a home or a house garage there and so on. And then the farm stand would have been east of that? Just trying to picture it in my head.
It's generally in that location. The house would be towards the left side or the western side of the basin, the southwest corner. And the farm stand would be where the basin access is, is dark gray hatch.
Yes.
That's approximately where the farm stand would have been.
Right. And those two structures will be demolished and replaced with your drainage basin there?
Correct. So we reduced the maximum improved lot coverage from 36.2% to 32.7%. The FAR was reduced from 0.5 to 0.44. And the maximum building height was also reduced from, sorry, 36.54 to 31.31.
So Matt, just for the review of the record, the D1 use variance and the FAR variance, what other bulk variances are required?
Correct.
Could you give me a rundown of the other bulk variances that are required, please?
Sure. The maximum, or the front yard setback required on Route 22, 200 feet's required. We are maintaining 100-foot setback similar to what was previously proposed. And I believe that was the only other bulk variance. Let me double check my other notes. Also the loading, did you want me to get into loading?
And that's unchanged since the last time, correct?
Well, the number, the number of loading spaces is unchanged, but we did relocate the loading, the garage, or the interior loading spaces to the western side of the building, when previously it was along the Route 22 frontage. So we still need a variance where four loading spaces are required and we're only proposing two.
Thank you. The one variance has to be signage along 22?
Correct. That's remaining unchanged. We're proposing a five-foot, or the sign be setback five feet from the right-of-way since the Route 22 right-of-way is rather large along our property frontage.
Any steep slope variances required by this application?
No, so that brings up a good point. We were able to eliminate the steep slope variance that we were previously requesting. It was just a way of the calculation because the existing office building had like small knee walls and the way our civil 3D surface game, very technical, but interprets the, those grades, it made it above the 30%, but it's really not a steep slope. It was just a feature on the site.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, board questions on engineering. All right, board professionals.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if I have any questions necessarily for this witness. I will say I apologize for the lateness in my review memos based upon when we got.
It was a big holiday last week, it's all right.
Yeah, I worked on it. But I will echo that they did, there is a reduction in the number of variances that previously were identified in my original review memo largely based on the reconfiguring of the loading space and the parking in the front yard. There were a number of changes you'll see in the review memo that I tried to highlight for things that were changing, so I tried to make sure that it was looked at. As far as the landscaping, I did identify that there was relief, at least a design waiver for the landscaping based on that transition buffer on 28. The ordinance does require that the plantings in that buffer be 75% evergreens and they're only proposing 44%. It does that for a reason. Obviously, it's a separation between commercial and residential properties. I will wait to hear from the architect because I did have a chance, I did get the renderings electronically and I'm not sure if they, if the site plan, the 2D version matches up with the 3D renderings and if, I'd like to hear from the architect.
The board has seen no renderings yet.
Yeah, I guess you'll see them on the fly tonight, but I think that if what the architect has proposed, I will probably look to see some changes to the landscape plan, but I want to hear from the architect first about that.
I agree. If we get nothing out of tonight, I want to make sure that members of the public have input on landscaping and the buffer zone, vegetated buffer, and the board has input here because I want to get this right. You know, we're losing a farm stand. It's a charming piece of property and I want to make sure that what goes in here is reflective of what that neighborhood deserves.
Yes. One other thing, just noticing from the existing area of the woods that are to remain from aerials, for the engineer to sort of question, there appear to be some dead ash trees from the aerials. I wasn't sure if you were proposing to remove any dead trees from the existing vegetation.
I would double check our plans, but if they're dead, we would agree to remove them.
Okay, I didn't see them removed on there, so I do, I would recommend that that be taken care of as well. That's all I have for this witness, thank you.
Thank you very much. Bill?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I am the guilty party of having taken vacation last week.
You're allowed to take your family's vacation, Bill.
So I do apologize to the board for not having had a chance to review the plans. I took a brief look at them before the meeting tonight. I have a couple of questions, but would probably reserve most of my questions until after. I have.
I actually think it's a good thing that we're going to have the hearing, that we're going to get your report, we can digest it, we can come back and we can have members of the public and the board can look at your memo and ask better questions. I think it's a good thing.
Should I hold off or should I throw a few out there now?
You should throw a few out there now and we're going to reserve the right to come back and cross-examine this witness.
So one thing, Matt, I just, I just want you to go back to, and I know we're going to hear from the architect, but I'm a little, I'm just a little hung up on where exactly the new roll-up doors are located. Are they on the east side of the building on the upper tier? Is that where they're proposed?
Correct.
Okay, so it's, they're still going to line the east side of the building and then there's going to be a few around the northerly corner and the southerly corner. Can you just, can you show that for the board on the, on the site plan rendering?
Sure. I forgot I could zoom in on a PDF, but these little rectangles here on the northwest corner of the building, those represent the roll-up doors. So along this portion of the building, the eastern side of the side, you can see some of the roll-up doors, so there's approximately five. I might be miscounting, our architect can definitely give you a correct number. And then on the eastern facade, we also have roll-up doors along most of the facade. And then similarly on the southern facade, we have roll-up doors from the corner of the building and to where the bends back on Route 28.
And do you know off the top of your head how many roll-up doors there were compared to what there are now?
I don't have that number handy.
I don't recall on the, on the original site plan, did that propose a similar one-way circulation or was it two-way all the way around the previous building or the original plan?
Just verifying, but referring back, this was A2, that was previously presented at the last hearing. It was one-way circulation. We did flip the orientation of how cars would circulate, so now it's going counterclockwise. I believe previously it was going clockwise.
Okay. And in the areas where the roll-up doors are currently proposed, did the driveway width in those areas change at all compared to the prior version? I know you've heard some concerns, I think we've all mentioned the concerns about how a vehicle is going to access and effectively use those roll-up door areas. And I'm just curious if the pavement width in those areas has changed at all?
Not where the roll-up doors are. So we reduced the drive aisle on the southern side along Route 28. That's parallel with the Route 28, it's at 21 feet, but the drive aisle, as you head more east around the corner of the building, that portion of the drive aisle is 24 feet where the roll-up doors are. So it remains unchanged.
Okay. You mentioned about the new fire access or emergency access driveway. Did that result in any additional trees in that area being removed? Is that going to open up a view shed from that, I guess it's that southeastern, well, get my orientation here. Well, it's actually the southerly corner of the property.
So I answered the first part. It didn't increase the number of trees because it's in a similar location to the existing driveway for the whole Tectonic Building. So the path's very similar. Would it open up a view shed? I mean, previously we did have a landscape, but now it's not, but you had to be standing at a very particular angle. It'd be very difficult, to be honest, to see it from that curb cut or in that area because there are, where there is a break in the vegetation if you're looking, there's at least four, four trees in that corner. And that's just at that one spot, but everywhere else it's very heavily landscaped or existing vegetation.
Okay. And I see your plan shows a swinging gate, a locking gate at the top of the driveway where it enters the access drive. Is there also going to be a gate proposed down by Route 28 or is that going to be open access?
We provide a gate or a breakaway chain with bollards, whatever we prefer to prohibit someone from accidentally going on the.
I think it would make sense to have some type of barrier on the 28 end of that driveway just to prevent somebody from mistakenly coming up the drive. I know it's going to be a grass paver type driveway, but we don't want to encourage any access at all. Wetlands. I know at the last hearing there was some discussion, I think your plan showed a couple of pockets of state open waters, maybe wetlands. I saw in the new submission, you guys produced a letter from, I forget who it was from, but from an environmental scientist. Can you just talk to the board about the environmental constraints, the wetlands, open waters, if any, on this property?
Sure. So the western, well, the existing conditions, there's two lots on the property. So the western lot, we do have a freshwater wetlands LOI that indicate no wetlands, presence absence. But the eastern portion of the property, we do not have freshwater wetlands LOI. So and since that was the case, we had a wetland specialist, Equal Sciences, do a site visit and inspect the property, do a three parameter approach to review the wetlands and they determined that there's no wetland feature. We aren't, we don't plan on submitting to the DEP. The DEP takes a very long time to issue an LOI. It could be a year, maybe two years sometimes. So we submitted that supplemental letter, investigated the property.
And along those lines, you already have an LOI, correct, for Lot 1?
Correct.
Is that right? And that's still active in good standing?
Yes.
But that's only for the northerly or westerly portion of the property?
Yes.
That's the Lot 1 side?
Yes.
So for Lot 2, well, I guess, I guess you had the entire property looked at, right? With a focus on Lot 2 to supplement the LOI?
Correct.
And everything came back with, with nothing?
Correct.
Okay. Let me just see if I have anything else. Any changes to the lighting plan that was previously proposed? Or is it all in keeping with what the board heard at the last hearing?
There are minor changes, but it's generally the same design intent. We have the house side shields from Route 28 to avoid, you know, light fixtures from facing residents. There's zero spill to the property besides at the driveway on Route 22. That's to provide safe lighting levels on entering, exit of the property. But generally, it's the same design intent from the last submission.
Okay. Two more questions. I mentioned about the fire access. Did you receive an updated memo from our fire official? Did he take a look at these updated plans? I don't recall.
I'm not sure. We received a document, I'm not sure if that was the fire official's letter, but.
It seems that we had received a one-page letter with no header on it from the fire official?
Okay.
Just noting that it had been placed on the plan. If you can, excuse me, I'm just going to grab. going to grab--
There was a memo.
There was a memo.
And just for the record, you're referring to the memo that's dated July 3, right?
Correct.
25? Five bullet points?
I'd like something with a letterhead.
I think, I think we need something with a letterhead.
Yeah.
Okay. Can, can we work on that? Well, Maria's checking. Thanks.
Okay, so Maria, the first page is dated March 10, 2025, and the second page is July 3, 2025?
Yeah. So what he did is he just made an update and added to his original March 10 memo, and it says July 20, July 3. I believe everybody has one in their packet.
We'll, we'll take a look at that and make sure it checks out. Last question, Matt, you mentioned the steep slopes. You, you relooked at your survey with your, your AutoCAD, and are you testifying that there are no plus 30 slopes on the property, or is it that you're not disturbing any 30% slopes?
We are not disturbing over 30% slopes.
You're not disturbing any over 30. Okay. Very good. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill. All right, members of the public, if you'd like to come forward and ask questions on engineering testimony only, now is the time, and you'll get another opportunity at our next meeting to cross-examine this witness on engineering testimony as well. You can come on forward.
Mr. Chairman, Board, Interpreet Banga, 376, State Route 28, Bridgewater, New Jersey.
Again, please, I'm sorry, your name?
Interpreet Banga.
Can you spell that for me?
I-N-D-E-R-P-R-E-E-T. Last name Banga, B-A-N-G-A.
Thank you.
I live directly across from the proposed property.
And you're a member of the planning board, correct?
I am a member of the planning board as well. But I don't believe there is a conflict of interest as it relates to this. So a statement going into a question, but more than nine trees have been removed or down since the tree count survey. Backhoes have knocked down even more during recent pit tests for permeability data. I would like the board to request a revised tree count based on what was submitted previously. The existing buffer, as it was described by Mr. Kunsling?
Kunsman.
Kunsman. It's thin, thin and decadent at best, meaning a lot of dead trees. I think our board planner had mentioned this as well, as, you know, a lot of the dead trees came from the lantern flies and the, and the ash border. So it definitely needs a lot more trees for there to be minimal impact. I can tell you that during the winter season, you can see the building straight as day. So a lot of those trees that are in the little buffer zone that you've mentioned so far, like I said, are dead.
Mr. Banga, the light green on the plant on A3, that's the area you're referring to?
So it's the lower--
On the south side.
--east corner. Yeah, so the untouched area. There's a single row currently being proposed, but that definitely needs, you know, bulking up. I did have a question regarding, and maybe this is going to be, you know, I think you said you mentioned that there's going to be some renderings that are going to show exactly what that looks like. You know, I can tell you that, like I said, when I, when I can see directly through with the current tree cover, you can see directly, directly. So I would like to see kind of how that's going to look like with the proposed single coverage. I definitely think it needs at least a double coverage. The question that I had for you was regarding the screening. So I guess, you know, you use double coverage towards the bottom, the bottom left. What, what was the thought process on the single row that is directly going to be impacting the residents on Route 28?
We wanted to maintain as much of the existing buffer as possible. This is a recent aerial, by the way, in the background. I believe it's from 2024 at a minimum.
And have you driven, have you, have you gone past, and have you looked at it from Route 28?
Oh, yeah. I grew up in this area, by the way, on Huntley Way. So I know this area very well. But, yeah, I, I can take another look, but we'll, we'll have renderings or perspectives that took a photo of what it looks like today and superimpose our proposed improvements.
And those trees that are being proposed right now are going to be eight feet, correct?
Yes.
I heard, I heard the number eight feet, but I wasn't, I wasn't sure if it was all the way around, or?
The evergreens will be at eight feet, the ornamentals and shade trees will be taller.
Okay. And then with regards to the trees that have been removed and the backhoe, that the other trees that have been knocked down by the backhoes, are you going to, are you going to add those back? Because, you know, from the count that was mentioned, I think you guys have made a couple of changes to add, add back. But I think you really need to consider those additional nine plus however other ones were removed.
Our survey was done before that, and where those, you know, the backhoe was, that, those test pit locations would be in the basin footprint, so it would be part of our disturbance in the ultimate tree calc, or requirement.
So just to clarify, you're going to, you're going to, when you look at it, you're going to add those additional trees back? You're going to look at the ones that were removed in the tree survey based on today's date, not the one that was done previously?
I'm not following.
Where the trees were, so the trees were removed, right? Or were they, they were, they have been removed, or they've been knocked down by the backhoe?
I, I can't say that that's, I'm not sure which trees. I'm not made aware of which trees are being, or were removed, if any. So I can't say for certain, but I, I believe you, by the way. I'm just saying, I don't know exactly which ones you're talking about.
So all I'm asking for is that the trees that have been, that were presently, when you guys did the survey, those have been obviously removed, or based on what we've been able to gather, and we're requesting that, you know, you take a look at those ones, and based on the count that you are proposing now, that that just is trued up to what the, the actual--
Mr. Kunsman's point was if they were not already slated to be removed, then we will certainly--
Okay.
But if they were already in an area during the time to remove, removal of those being already planned--
Okay, that's fair.
If it happens to be in an area that was not slated to be removed--
I think Mr. Banga has a good point. I've been up there. This is a very lukewarm vegetative buffer. I mean, and we're all fighting the ash pour on our, on our property. This, every property is getting hammered. Maybe before the next meeting, you could look at, maybe where you could fill some spots in, and, you know, I think we can make that more robust.
Okay. You said only one, one question per today, right? Or?
You can come back and ask more questions. You're going to have the availability of all these witnesses tonight at the next meeting.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else?
Jim Brady, 351 Route 28.
Okay.
In regard to the decreased number of parking spots that came down to 15, how many of those are going to be used daily by employees of the storage facility, which would render the available parking spots even less than 15? That's a question I have.
I don't know if Mr. Kunsman gave testimony to that fact, but I think they're going to have an operations witness. Mr. Capizzi, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's something that, I think you want to keep that question in the bank for the, another witness.
Can you tell me the revised number of units?
Our architect will be able to give, give that information.
I'm ahead of myself.
No, it's okay. No problem.
Everything else can wait till next time.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. My name is Deborah Kurtz. I live at 413 Route 28, about six houses up the hill from this. And my question is about the entrance to the site from Route 22. Is that different now than it was on the original drawing, or is it the same? In other words, is it using the existing driveway, or is this like further west?
The curb cut location is very similar. We are making it slightly wider than what is in existing conditions. Existing, it's only approximately 18 feet wide because the existing site utilized the driveway on Route 22 and 28, had a driveway on each frontage. We're not going to have that, so we're just going to have the one driveway that has to allow two-way traffic, so we had to make it a little bit wider. So, but it's in a very similar location to what's there existing.
It just seems like it, it has more of a, like, where you'd have to make a sharper right turn to get into the area. Is that true?
It would be, it would be a harder right turn out of the site, but we have run truck turning analysis for large box trucks, and they can make those maneuvers in and out of the site.
Okay. The reason I'm asking this is because to get onto 22 from that direction, even if you're coming off 28 onto 22, it's a sharp hill that you're going up. It's hard to accelerate. And so my concern is if this driveway is closer to the entrance from 28 to 22, or if this driveway is more of a right turn, is that going to possibly cause slowing of traffic when you're trying to get on 22 if someone else is trying to get off into the facility compared to what we would have currently, the way that Tectonic is designed?
It's in a very similar location as Tectonic. The benefit of this site is that there is a pretty large shoulder to allow cars to be able to maneuver off, you know, into the shoulder, and then make it, make a right turn in the site or out. So it does allow for a little bit more room. But it's in a very similar location to what Tectonic had or has right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public, questions on engineering? All right, oh.
Yes. Interpreet Banga. I had here again. Sir, you had mentioned the building height. Do you know what the building height is compared to surrounding residential structures?
I do not have off-site topography for the residential.
Okay, because I think there is a residential home that is on the top. If I'm looking onto the, yeah, right over there?
I don't believe that's residential. That's commercial. I mean, maybe it's acting as a residential, but it's really a commercial lot with, you know, trailers and landscape equipment and stuff like that.
Yeah, no, I live right across, so.
Okay.
I know people live there.
Oh, they do? Okay.
Yes. There is a, I believe it's, you know, like an apartment or something along those lines. I think it's, it's important to be able to see, like, what, what that, you know, I, I know Chairman Fuze had asked if you talked to any of the residents. You know, I haven't gotten questions specifically, but, you know, that is going to be directly impacted by this. So I would like you guys to compare what the, the building height is, as that is going to be directly impacted. Will the facility be visible from neighboring homes, and if so, which angles, since you were on Route 28?
I believe our, our architect has pretty nice perspectives that, that would give a better idea.
Okay, so we can come back to that one?
Yes.
Which exterior materials, colors, finishes are proposed, and will they complement the residential character?
Architect will answer any--
Okay, I'll come back to that one. Regarding the emergency access, so I think you mentioned there's a chain, you guys were considering a chain. I've seen people take that chain down. There's two posts there currently. It has been currently used by anybody who wants to take a quick turn if they don't want to make the--
I used it.
Yeah.
Went in there with my Jeep.
It's not really, it's not really monitored. I know sometimes the police officers will go in and, you know, to kind of see if people are going too fast on Route 28, which, that's fine. Would you guys be willing to consider a gated fence?
What I, what I can say about people cutting through is there's also two more gates that a person would need to go through if they came from that, if they got through a chain. There's a gate that's southeast corner of the drive aisle, and there's also another gate when they have to exit the site towards the driveway. But--
I'm sorry, there's a gate at the very bottom of the driveway that's on Route 28? Is that what you're saying?
No, no. I was saying there's a gate on the southeast corner, but if, if a gate's requested by the board, we can certainly provide a gate at that driveway, too.
Well, I think people sometimes make K-turns, or, or, you know, they pull in and then they kind of pull out. That is a huge hazard. I've, I've almost seen, I've seen nearly a few accidents that could have been fatal.
I can only propose something in, in the property line. I can propose it right on the property line, but I can't propose a gate in the right of way. It's the DOTs.
Mr. Chairman, whenever the fire department wants there, certainly we're happy to accommodate. So if the fire department's okay with the gate, we'll put a gate.
Okay. Well, anytime the neighbors have input, I mean, I want to kind of embrace the input and come up with a, you know, a solution. You know, I know on the other side of town, when LCS constructed their, their units, we put in a gate there, right? How does EMS access that facility from Foothill?
That was, that, there is a gate over there, and I know emergency services either have a key or a fob to get through it. They definitely have access through it.
And the project we just did on 202, 206, we did a gate as well in between the two properties for the, the adult daycare.
We did.
We did a gate there as well.
I don't remember the, how we resolved the details of that, other than to make sure that fire was happy with the access as part of the compliance process, the perfection of the site plan approval.
Right.
Making sure that the fire official was satisfied.
We did put something.
So, Mr. Banga, you want to see a fence?
Yeah, I think--
You think that'll promote safety?
No, because I've, I've seen, you know, people come in there, make a turn, make a U-turn.
Right.
I think it's a huge safety hazard. I've, I've nearly seen a few accidents, you know, occur, because when you're coming down 28 towards Bogart--
Right.
--the slope is, is, you know, accelerates very quickly.
All right. Well, I would throw out the gate solution that we used for LCS. If you pull up Foothill Road, LCS is a nursing home facility off of Frontier, and we wanted access off of Foothill. It's pretty inexpensive aluminum of gating. I, I think that might be a nice compromise if you're willing to, if you want to look at it and let us know at the next meeting. Good with you, Mr. Banga?
Yeah. I think that would help the safety. And then perimeter fencing, is there going to be perimeter fencing only around the, the actual property itself where the buffer, where the tree buffer is, or is that going to also go along Route 28? Or is there, is there perimeter fencing around?
There is perimeter fencing around the whole entire building, across, like, directly behind the curb of the drive aisle.
There's no one a little bit for us next, please.
Sure. So you can see, it's kind of hard to see, but there's--
Next to the trees, you're saying?
Yes. So there's a fence a couple of feet behind the curb line, the drive aisle, and that wraps around the whole site.
And how, how tall is that?
Six feet.
Okay. And what kind of material is going to be used for that?
Along Route 28 is a proposed six-foot-high brown PVC solid fence.
What kind? PVC?
Yes.
Not aluminum?
Correct. That way, it provides a solid screen. Aluminum typically not.
Okay. Oh, so it's going to be screened?
Correct.
Okay. And then just with regards to the roll-ups, so I think you had mentioned the roll-ups are going to be on the, the top side, right?
Yes.
So when someone, if someone's on the, the southeast, how are they typically going to access? Are they going to park their car perpendicular or parallel there?
Typically, parallel.
So parallel, so the, the headlights are going to be facing?
Oh, no. Sorry. If you, they're going to, the headlights will be facing east.
East.
If they're at these roll-up doors on the southeast corner of the building, along the eastern, or southern, southern facade--
Yeah.
--they'd be facing more north, northeast, parallel with the building.
And for the roll-ups, typically, nobody perks, like, perpendicular, whereas they would back up their car?
Typically not.
Okay. How, how, why is that space? Is it, does it allow for that? Like, if I wanted to, I don't have a storage unit, but if I, if I had a storage unit, if I could back my car up and just take out whatever I need to take out of my van or my truck or whatever?
Yeah. The drive aisle is 24 feet, which is, allows for two cars, one-- Yeah, the drive aisle is 24 feet, which allows for two cars, one wanting to be parked there parallel, one to go around, or a truck. Typically, it's not that way.
Perpendicular to it.
And that person is perpendicular. They would be in their unit and not somewhere else on the site. There is someone in the office as well that can assist if there's an issue, but our operations representative can definitely answer more questions about how it's typically, a customer typically uses the facility.
Okay. Just a question to our board professionals for the other storage units. Do we know how customers of storage typically bring in their cars to these types of facilities? Or do we have any indication of the other storage based on some of the other applications?
I believe we heard testimony from the operator at the last hearing regarding that, but I, one of the questions in my review memo was based on the revised drawings. What is, has, does the operational test, operations change on the site? As far as, you know, from what I've heard in other places, and I'll, you know, obviously wait to hear from their witness on it, but it's that they generally, people generally park in certain places near the stairwell or elevator access into the building, and then will bring their stuff up. Obviously, for those that have roll-up doors, they park right up. I think that's what we heard last time, that there's a hatch area for them to park. They're obviously going to, it's only a five-foot area, their car's going to overhang, but they've testified that there's plenty of room for another car to navigate around it. But as far as the placement of parking spaces is one of the questions that I raised in my review memo about, is the parking adequate for the use and how it's proposed? Obviously, we still need to hear from those witnesses.
Okay. And then, so I know, and this might be for someone else, but it's currently being proposed at Point 44 FAR, and I think what is currently allowed besides the zoning, right? Because do you want, I think C3 is permitted. Just kind of curious to, you know, on the perspective of that being nearly double, you know, why can't we shrink the size?
We'll have planning testimony afterward.
Okay. All right, that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banga.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Regarding the car, sort of the parking by these garage doors, have you considered, I mean, is there any areas that are marked as fire lanes on this site? Because I think without sort of the context of this testimony, the fire marshal reviewing the documents, I mean, it's not clear that people would be parking, you know, on that 24-foot-wide roadway around the facility.
We can meet with the fire, official fire chief, just to clarify any concerns and see what stripings are required.
Okay. I think that's definitely warranted, because just looking at your turning analysis here on C302, drawing C302 here, now coming around that southeast corner of the building, it looks like the fire truck uses the entire roadway width, so, and that's exactly where you have those garage doors, so we really, you know, potentially might have to mark the area, you know, where the fire lane is, or maybe even have to stripe a shoulder where maybe parking is permitted. But I think there needs to be a little bit more structure here in terms of where parking is permitted, especially keeping it open for the fire engine. Thank you.
All right, just last call for members of the public. Any questions? Looks like we have one more. Just, Mr. Braden, just your address again.
351 Route 28.
Thank you.
This is just a rebuttal to your comment.
If we could just get you in the microphone.
That lady's question regarding entrance to the site, and you remarked there is a substantial shoulder existing. There is not a substantial shoulder existing, certainly not enough to accommodate the SU-30 box truck you guys are referencing as the typical-sized vehicle coming in and out. Is it premature to talk about traffic, or is that coming a later point?
Let's ask the applicant.
It is premature, and you're really not here to testify right now. It's only questions of what he testified to.
Okay.
Okay.
I can't rebut a comment if it was inaccurate.
You'll have plenty of opportunity to do that.
Okay.
Or you can ask him a question about it.
I see.
But it's...
Are you aware that there's not a substantial shoulder at the entrance of the proposed facility? Or were you aware that there's not a sufficient acceleration lane for box trucks coming out of the facility?
And council could object to the form of your question, by the way, but you understand the question, like, what are you relying on to say that there's sufficient?
I agree, there's no XL or DSL lane, but I disagree about the shoulder.
There's one there.
Okay.
But it's certainly not big enough to accommodate a truck or a moving truck or even a van.
But Mr. Kunsman's not a traffic expert.
I understand. I'm sorry if I'm premature.
No, but I think to help your line of question, I think there will be a traffic expert here at some point. This may be a good question for them, and you can really bore into that topic.
Sorry to be premature.
No, no worries at all. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I hate to throw one...
No, no, get in there.
One more thing in, just related to the landscaping. I know, you know, a member of the public came up and talked about it. I was just looking at something, I went to go review one of the questions, and this did not come up in my review memo, but it is something I noticed, and I just wanted to make it aware, particularly if the applicant is returning, that they can address it possibly. For the transition buffer along Route 28, it notes that the requirement or the amount of trees that they are proposing towards that is based upon the linear footage, the linear length of Route 28, but they excluded the portion of wooded area. I'm not sure that the ordinance, or it's my interpretation of ordinance, it doesn't include any exclusions for any portion that's already existing that they're preserving. So I think that calculation needs to be based off the entire Route 28 linear...
I agree. I think that vegetative buffer is dying. I think that area is in need of rehab anyway. I think that shouldn't be given credit to the applicant here. I think the whole length of 28 should be in that calculation.
And the other thing I want to point out is they based their proposal to meet that require, as calculated, based upon 86 proposed and 22 existing. I don't, I think maybe those existing...
Sounds like the existing's less than 22 at this point.
Yeah, and I think it's probably outside of that existing wooded area, I'm assuming, is what they're basing off. It's difficult to tell, so if they could clarify that in their updates, if they could address it more in line with the ordinance, how the ordinance reads, I think that would be helpful to the conversation about landscaping and ultimately the end goal of what the landscaping buffer is there for. I think that would, I would appreciate that.
Good catch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify two points, so that the SU-30 is not the typical vehicle that will enter the site. It was there to show the largest possible vehicle that could enter the site and its ability to maneuver around the property. Just to also respond to a question regarding building height and how it sits in relation to the residential dwellings along 28. Again, we're in a commercial district. The permitted height is 45 feet. We're at 31 feet. Your typical residential dwelling is around 30 feet, so by comparison, even though we're in a commercial zone, the height of the structure is comparable to one that you would find in a residential neighborhood. But again, it's apples to oranges, because we are in a commercial corridor. When you see the renderings, it's not residential in type, not to, we don't, it's, we're in a commercial zone, the building is designed to look commercial in nature, so when you see the renderings, that's why it's intended to look like an office building, which is a permitted use in the zone.
All right. If there are no further questions, Mr. Kunsman, I can have Mr. McGreevy come up and go through the architecture. Looks like we have one more question in the back. Just get your name and address, please.
My name is Ketan Thakar, AD Shephard Road, Bridgewater.
You spell your name, please.
K for kilo, E for tango, A N, last name Thakar, T H A K K E R.
Thank you.
My question is, why do you need access to 28?
It was requested from the fire official to provide emergency access, but it's not for customers or people busy in the site on a daily operation. It's just for a fire truck.
The chances are there, they use frequently. Now, I know you said you grew up in this town, but if I want to make a left turn from Bogart Drive in a peak hours, sometime I have to wait five minutes, 10 minutes. Sometime from Bogart to Purcell, traffic jumps up. Sometime when you want to make a left turn from Garrettson to 28, I hope you know that intersection, do you?
Yeah, I went to Bridgewater, Raritan High School. I'm very familiar with it.
Yeah, so when did you drive on a Garrettson Road last time and made a left?
My in-laws live in Pinder, and so I'm over here all the time. I know the area.
Pinder is five miles away.
I know. I'm saying I know the area.
Yeah, you know the area, but we experience this every day.
Sure.
If I want to make a left from Buena Parkway to 28, sometime there's a long wait. So my suggestion is, do you have alternate of not having a gate or access on 28 and rather manage to have multiple access on 22?
It was specifically asked by the fire official to have access on Route 28. That way, and then that there's an issue on Route 22, there's another access point on Route 28. So originally, we did not have, on our original submission, we did not have an access on Route 28, but we were requested to add one.
So you're going to be installing a gate along Route 28 that will only be accessible by emergency services. So that gate is going to be as close to the freeway line along Route 28 as is permitted.
But who would decide what's the emergencies? If I'm, if I'm bringing my storage and if I request, can you please open the gate? I need to get out on 28. Who would determine that?
It's exclusive authority with the fire department.
Only fire department and police department can use it.
Correct.
Okay. All the trees, you said you're going to plant the trees, they all uniform trees from everywhere, or it's various?
We have various types of trees. We're proposing to plant varieties.
Okay. And what is the building height going to be?
I'll give you the exact number for you.
31.31.
And do you know there's another storage facility on 28? Do you know their height?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
There is another storage facility on 28 before Country Club Road.
I don't have the height of that building.
I'm a commercial broker, and many of the storage is not 36 feet or 35 feet height. So, and if you look at the residential area across the street, it's mostly 25 feet. They're all two-story houses, so each floor nine feet and although probably 20, 25 feet.
Sir, it's a time to ask questions only. You'll have an opportunity to make statements.
Thank you.
Mr. Kunsman, you just stated that the building height's 31.3.
Yes, we, we had a mistake on our bulk table, like, the, the number on the bulk or the height, but if you look at the calculation, it had the correct calculation. It just, we forgot to add it.
Thank you. Just update that when you get next set of plans. Thank you.
Sir, your name and address, please.
Hey, my name's Dan Whalen, 445 Meadow Road. The trees you're putting in, how many were there, like 200-something? Are you guys maintaining these so they don't die within a year? Because I don't think eight-foot trees are going to cover much, but they're all dead.
Typically, we have to post a maintenance guarantee for landscaping.
And then, eight-foot trees don't cover two stories either, so how long is it going to take to actually hide this place?
Sure. So, I mean, a lot of these trees we're proposing, they can grow, the evergreens can grow up to 30 inches per year. In five years, they could be 21 feet in height. Some of the ornamental or canopy trees, they can grow 12 inches to 24 inches per year, and in five years, it'll be 18 feet.
And that's with constant maintenance of them, to actually get them to take? Because, I mean, I've been on projects where you plant 100 trees and they die within a year, because nobody does anything, so what's the guarantee there? Is it actually a long-term maintaining?
Sure. Our operator and, you know, property owner, that's...
Okay.
Typically, there's a condition of approval placed in the resolution that requires a landscaping plan being maintained in perpetuity, and if the applicant fails to abide by that condition and there's enforcement authority by the township to compel us to undertake that necessary replacement or maintenance as necessary.
Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think that's all the questions. Why don't we take a quick break, then we'll bring the next witness back?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's 8:25. Why don't we come back at 8:35? We'll reconvene.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So the first floor here, if I may zoom in a little bit, is going to be, like I said, at the ground floor containing the office. The auxiliary spaces there for break room, handicap bathrooms, utility rooms, I'm sorry, janitorial rooms, my mistake, and the interior loading two bay locations. Each floor will have the necessary egress stairs and elevators. You'll notice from the floor plan here that as someone enters through the loading area and backs a vehicle in, they come right out the sliding doors right to an elevator for quick and easy access. Or if they park in any of the parking spaces on the west side, that they enter through the sliding doors to the slight south side here, and the elevator is not a far travel either. All egresses do exit to grade, so everything is above code on that. As we move up to the second floor, which is a 10-foot, 6-inch height change. Each floor is 10-foot, 6 inches with 8-foot tall units, which allows for general coverage fire sprinklers throughout the entire facility. You'll see that on the second floor, we again have that elevator A on the west side, but due to the elevation change, as Matt described, as we traverse higher in elevation, as we travel east on the site, we do have walk-in access on the east side. So there are parking spaces on the east. Those parking spaces then provide access to this east entrance and elevator B right inside. A lot of questions came up before regarding the drive-up units. To speak to them specifically, on the north side, the northeast corner, there are five drive-up units. On the east side, there are 14 drive-up units. And on the south side, there are seven. These drive-up units are the exterior roll-up door access units that were questioned before. Every other unit in this facility is accessed from the interior of the building. So as Matt has spoke to you previously, we do have an average building height of 31 feet, 31.31 feet. We are exposed on the west side at 36.5 feet above grade and on the east side at 26 feet above grade. Also, as stated, we are well below the 45-foot maximum height for this commercial zone. Speaking to the units before I get away, I did not mention this for the ground floor. The ground floor has 156 units. This second floor on the screen here, 251, and I'll show you the third floor in a second at 348, for a total of 755 units. Our previous application had a total of 835 units. We reduced the unit count by 80 with the loss of the 15,000 square feet. And as I move up to the third floor, you'll see that that increase in the number of units is not only due to the average size of the units becoming smaller, but also that loading area, which is a double-height space to accommodate the trucks and any larger vehicles that want to pull in, is no longer on this floor. It only takes up the first and second floor. This entire building would, will be climate-controlled except for the drive-up units. Those are non-climate-controlled units. We do have, and I'll show you on the elevations in a second, power pets and guards on the exterior, roughly about 3 and 1/2 to 5 feet. And we do locate all of our HVAC units at minimum 10 feet from the edge of the roof. That way, all of the HVAC units on these, on the roof here will be screened from view. Overall, this building will be a state-of-the-art facility with key fob access or key code access for security. I believe our operations testimony will attest to that in a little bit. I mentioned overall that this facility will have two elevator cores, two egress stairs. We will have access to the roof through a hatch out of one of the egress stairs. Most likely, we would probably do it off of here, but again, would not be visible from any of the surrounding sides due to the power pet. The overall shape is based on the setback requirements, which is why we do have a sloped or angled wall here. All right? And as I move forward into the elevations on the next sheet. Okay. Moving from our previous application, just set of drawings, to this one, there was a significant increase in the number of faux-glazing windows that were applied to the exterior of this to give this a more commercial business office space appearance. You know, the fact that we are in a commercial zone that does allow office spaces, we're trying to mimic that aesthetic and give this desirable aesthetic that is inside of what is permitted in this zone. So we do have the building-mounted lights shining down, providing the minimum requirement lighting for egress. You'll see on the west facade, if I may zoom in here. We do have our office entrance opposite of parking. Our fence would be in between the office and the loading doors, these sectional overhead doors. And those are primarily solid, about a 60-40 split, solid-to-glass, solid which will allow, will prevent the headlights from coming out for any vehicles that are either backing in or pulling out. Glass to allow people to see if the location is occupied, then they pull into one of the parking spots and wait. We do have the sliding door access, which I described before, and this is a little tricky to see here, but due to the slope of the wall, there is the egress door at grade over here. Each of these faux-glazing units here are either triple or quadruple painted, again giving that office aesthetic. And we do have true glazing over the units to give a bit of an aesthetic appeal as you drive up into the site. I do have the renders as a second PDF, which I will present to you guys shortly. As we go around the building, we have the opposite side here, the east elevation, where we do have those drive-up units. The roll-up doors are proposed to be white to match the aesthetic of the CMU, so that they do not draw any attention from any of the passing-by vehicles or from the neighbors. I will mention that along the south facade here, although we do have a few, there is a 6-foot-high brown PVC fence, solid, that would block these from view, as well as 8-foot planted trees in front of this, as Matt just testified to. So these doors will not be visible from the residential neighbors. These doors here would be slightly visible to the commercial property to the east. And there is a significant amount of vegetation that is existing to remain, covering the east side of this north elevation, so these would be barely visible as well. Again, I have renders in a little bit, which I will show you from all those perspectives.
Before you leave...
Sure.
I guess I'm the guy that asks for this stuff. What I was hoping to see was something that I could get my hands around in terms of this is what people living on Route 28 facing this building will see.
That's coming.
This is a very abbreviated form of what I was hoping to see. I mean, there's an elevation change there, right? From Route 28 to the...
As I mentioned...
Wait, wait.
I'm sorry, sir.
There's an elevation change which is not apparent here at all. You can't see that at all.
I understand.
There's fences, there's trees. Where's all that stuff?
That's in the second PDF I'll be presenting to in a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. All right. So also in this elevation, you can see how we are dropping the building a little bit below the grade by this dash line, this area. Here is all this ground floor below grade. All right? So before I move on to the renders, I do want to present our site sections to show the relationship of the grades traversing the site. All right. So zooming in on our key plan here. So we're cutting this section here, running in the north-south direction, from Route 22 to Route 28. I could probably zoom in enough on this overall versus getting into the secondary enlarged ones. So as you can see, from Route 28 on the left, excuse me, Route 22 on the left here to Route 28, we have a significant amount of space in which we are having plantings on. We will have existing and proposed plantings on both sides, as Matt just testified to. We are sinking the building below the grade, as I've said previously, so that we are minimally exposed above the earth. So from our perspective here, you can see we have a proposed fence here. We are higher at elevation, so as we view up, this 6-foot fence would actually block more than just 6 feet of the building. We'd be looking at near 9 to 10 feet of obscured vision of the building. And as we look at it from Route 28, as Matt testified, the elevation of Route 28 at the intersection of Bogart is 128 feet at the elevation. Our first floor being at 145 and our cellar plan, our ground floor, being at 134, 5, we are significantly higher, giving that vinyl fence and plantings the ability to block more of that view as we are having neighbors drive by. I will repeat again that I do have renders showing directions traveling east and west along Route 28 and Route 22.
William, just for a moment, the brake line that you're showing on the right side of the image...
This?
What is that representing?
Property line.
I'm sorry?
Property line.
And so that is a scaled representation of the 100-foot setback...
Yes.
...through 28?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. And then as I look to the other one here, I'll go to the key plan quick. You'll see that we're traveling east-west along the site. So here's where you see the significant grade change from our commercial neighbor on the east to the intersection of Route 28 and Route 22 on the west. And again, the area in which we're cutting out. So we do have, like I mentioned before, the three stories above grade to the west and the two stories above grade to the east. I can tell that everyone's really looking forward to these renders, so I'm going to jump right to those. All right?
Just have you, just tell us a number of sheets...
Sure.
Who they were prepared by, and so we can have it marked first, please?
Absolutely. So there are five renders in this PDF. Do they need to be marked individually or as a collective?
You know, I think it'd be better if we did them individually so that you could refer to each page and we can follow that.
Okay. What are we marking this as? Is it A4 or A5?
A4.
Oh, that's tiny, but it's there. Okay. So I'm going to label them as I progress through each of the renders here. So this first view is the view of the entrance as you enter the site. We are traveling east on Route 22. You'll see the existing vegetation of the trees that are remaining as the fully grown mature trees, as well as the, a large number of newly planted trees that are shown along the property line, excuse me, along the curb line adjacent to the building. The, in the back here, you'll see that this is an estate fence shown securing the facility with a gate access over here, as Matt described. All of these proposed trees are shown day-one plantings. Each of these trees, as Matt said, can grow in the neighborhood of 12, 18, or 24 inches per year, and we are looking at an uphill view. So you can see that we definitely cover more than just the typical 6, 8, 10-foot day-one planting heights. So we do have a material on the facade here of white CMU with blue insulated metal panel with the faux-glazing, giving that office aesthetic, with a tower element at the entrance corner for the office. As you can see from this view, due to the existing plantings, there is a fence back here and gate as well. Primarily, the loading area is already obscured from view. As you progress down Route 22 heading east, unless you look hard to the right as you're driving, which I really hope nobody does, you would not see the loading area.
William, as far as the modeling, before you turn to the...
Oh, yes.
Explain how this model was created.
Yes. So we produced this model based off of Bowler's landscaping grading plan, as well as a combination of our architectural elevations. So this render has been bounced between Bowler Civil Engineering's office and mine into review not only the location of the planting shown, but as well as the rendered heights of them as well. And as I mentioned, day-one plantings on proposed heights and grasses, proposed trees and grasses, my mistake.
Some of the slides that we're going to see in a moment show existing landscaping. Is that correct?
Yes. So some of the mature taller trees are shown as existing. I will point those out on each render.
Thank you.
All right. So the next exhibit will be A5. Let me just copy this to save a little bit of time here. So A5 here is traveling westbound on Route 22. You'll see the grass median in the middle, and the building should be completely obscured pretty much by the existing plantings on this. Again, as you saw from the civil engineering... What was this one? It was A3, Matt?
Yes.
Exhibit A3. There is a dense line of existing plantings that's remaining right on Route 22. That again, until you get probably about halfway down the building, you would not see this building without looking hard left.
And the building is in the background of that...
Correct. It is right behind here if I could produce it behind here.
I just want to point out, you need to change the label to A5.
Thank you so much for pointing that out, sir. A5. And, sure. Okay. All right. As I move on to the next view. So this is the view driving east along Route 22. This will be A6.
I think you just said Route 22. Route 28, you mean, correct?
I apologize. Yes, Route 28. Bogart is a bit further down here on the right-hand side, but as you travel eastbound, we do have that double line of evergreen planting at the front, planted at 8-foot height with a growth rate of about 30 inches per year. We have a group of existing trees here blocking again that loading area. You can see the existing trees further down, which many of them, based on our observation, has been at or above the height of the telephone poles. And then we do have those evergreens along the fence, and the brown fencing actually does wrap behind here, blocking the parking from view, which will also block the headlights to any of the residential neighbors. The next view here is from the intersection of Bogart and Route 28. Let me mark this as, what do you have, A7?
Yes.
A7 here has that dense plantings, existing, I should say, existing vegetation along Route 28, blocking a majority of the facility from view. You can see in a distance from this view at day-one plantings, some of the loading doors are visible. Again, due to that height change, that 6-foot fence being at a higher elevation does block more than just 6 feet of the building. So we're barely able to see any of the glazing and definitely will be above the truck headlight level. Again, these plants here, the evergreens are planted at 30 inches per year, and I believe that some of the other ones, I have a list here showing between 12 and 24 inches for year, per year for the deciduous trees. And then the last render is traveling westbound on Route 28. This will be A8. And working with the Bowler team, we counted over 70 trees that are currently existing to remain in this area. The access to that fire lane is planned in between these two telephone poles, and it should be fully screened, screening the building from view as you drive down the, drive west on Route 28.
The trees that are in this image, where is that image captured?
This image is captured from just, standing just east of the edge of the property line between us and the neighboring property, traveling westbound, looking at about a 45-degree angle to the north.
Is this something we grabbed from Google Earth or a photograph from your office? Where'd the...
So we've looked at Google Earth images from the area. We've looked at the Bowler planting, existing planting plan, the proposed planting plan. It's a combination of all those.
Thank you.
All right. So those are the renders. I just want to take a look to see if there's any other notes I wish to mention.
Before you leave, before you leave the render...
Sure.
Have you got one that purports to show what your proposed building will look like from a home directly opposite the proposed building, facing the proposed building on Route 28?
The closest render we have of that is what is this intersection of Bogart Drive and Route 28. Those vehicles leaving this neighborhood every day would have a very similar to view from this on day one. And as I mentioned, all of the plantings that are proposed on the west side of this image, where you have the most visibility of the proposed building, grow at a rate between 12, 18, or, I'm sorry, 12, 24, or 30 inches per year.
It looks as though this rendering is taken from or assumes ground level, a ground level.
It's meant to give it as though someone is standing on the sidewalk or driving a vehicle.
Right. And do you have something that will let us see what someone that's living in one of those buildings up on the second, they're all two-story homes, up on the second floor, what he's going to see, looking out across Route 28 at your proposed building?
I do not have a render view of that. You're talking about someone that's roughly, see, 2 stories, 8 foot, 9, so probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 feet off the ground. Is that correct, sir?
If you say so.
Okay. I think that we can produce one if necessary, but we don't have one currently.
Yeah, I'd certainly like, if we're going to get together again, I'd like to see something that gives us a clear perspective or a clear view of what residents on Route 28 are going to see when they look across 28 at your building. And I don't think any of these do that. You need something that's taken after you turn right on Bogart and you travel, I don't know, maybe a quarter mile, and you look directly across 28 at this proposed...
Pretty sure if we were a quarter mile down the road, it would be on our property limits. So I think that...
Then that's too long.
I understand. But I think that the best way to do it would be almost as though someone were standing, say, here, but 15 feet above the street.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is it right if I jump? I will bring the renderings back up if requested, but mind if I jump for a second? All right. So I want to jump back to the elevations, because I did not mention but should have, that we are only proposing one sign on this facility. There are no signs facing Route 28. The only proposed sign is at the entrance facing Route 22. It's roughly a proposed area of 75 square feet. Typically, the signage is smaller than that, but without an exact operator at this time telling what the signage is going to be, I'm proposing a less-than-maximum-size signage area in order for them to be able to put a sign application in later under a separate application.
I have a question.
Yes.
It looks like brick face. What will be the color of the, it looks more like brick face.
The white here? The white would be solid, sorry, split-face CMU in a white color. So if I can go up to here...
Okay.
The material is planned to be a split-face CMU by E.P. Henry with a color of, you know, Flori 500R is there where they identify, but it is a white split-face CMU.
I don't know what CMU means, so maybe you can help me out.
Sure. Concrete masonry unit. It's a, the dimensions of it are 8 by 16, 16 wide, 8 tall. Textured surface. It's not like the simple ones you see at Home Depot where they're all gray and flat and smooth. There is a rock look texture to this to give it an upscale appearance.
I'm just going to give you a little feedback.
Yeah.
Turn my microphone on. I'll give you some feedback. It looks like a warehouse. So in the last case on 22 and Vosler, I coined a term, and anyone's free to use it in the planning world, Catherine, land-use arbitrage. And arbitrage, what I do for a living is I arbitrage prices between two different points, and I take advantage of regulatory differences in different countries, and I make money off of that. I'm concerned that someone will take advantage of our land-use ordinance, and basically, you're in a middle ground between a warehouse and you're calling it a storage facility, but I tell you, it looks a damn like a warehouse. And I don't know what stops a homegrown business from pulling up with their truck and taking out goods, putting in goods every 2 hours, every 1 hour, every 15 minutes. And essentially, this is a warehouse, de facto, if someone wants to come in there and use it. And Mr. Vesio's point that, I don't even know if this is legal from a fire use standpoint, but the CMU components, the things that you're proposing are things that go on a warehouse. So I'm very concerned about this outdoor accessibility to, you know, not only cause noise to the neighborhood, but frankly, it just looks like a warehouse. And I think Mr. Sweeney was asking, what are the residents going to see? But I'll tell you what I see on your elevations right now. It looks like a warehouse. And those are prohibited in Bridgewater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
I believe that's everything that I would like to testify to at this point. Open to questions?
Yeah, I have one quick question. You talked about putting the sign up there that says self-storage. Is there any reason you didn't put up a sign since you don't have a tenant yet? Because you know they're going to come back and make a change.
Well, that's the whole point, is the signage will need to submit as a different application. I'm just quoting that as the signage area, so that...
But you're not going to put anything up there right now?
Without an application for a signage? No, nothing would go up there.
Okay. I thought I misunderstood.
No, it's just designating it an area square footage space.
Okay.
I have a question about the units that have roll-up doors.
Sure.
When someone comes and brings their stuff, they can park at their roll-up door and then put the stuff in?
That's correct, yes.
Is there enough space for them to do it is the question.
Yes. I believe that Matt testified to the fact that we have 24 feet between the building and the curb. Typical parking space is a 10-by-20 space, so if they took up 10 feet, there would still be 14 feet remaining for a vehicle to pass by.
You see on the engineering drawing, there was a stripped area around, so that's where people will park the car and then...
The first 5 feet around the building in front of those areas, I believe, are striped.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's good. Thanks.
So how many outdoor units are we talking about with roll-up doors in total?
Currently, 26. Our previous application had 76, so we reduced it by 50.
So 26, this is a 26-bay warehouse. That's what it looks like. Those are prohibited in Bridgewater. Warehouses.
I understand.
Yeah.
Does you have a breakdown of the size of the units?
Yes, I do.
You have 156, you said, on the first floor?
That's correct.
And so they would be larger units. Are they of varying sizes? I mean, just give us an indication about that first floor compared to the second and third.
Sure. So of, so like, yes, the ground floor does have 156 units on it, which vary from 200 square feet at a 10-by-20 down to a 5-by-5, 25-square-foot unit.
So 10-by-20 would be the largest entity accessed via the roll-up doors? Is that fair to say?
So on the, just want to make a clarification. The ground floor has the office and the interior loading doors. There are no exterior access unit on the ground floor.
Okay.
Because that's on the west side. The first floor we're designating, which is the level equivalent to the east elevation...
Yes.
...where those roll-up doors are. Those units are either 10-by-20, 10-by-25, or 10-by-15. So 150, 200, or 250 square feet.
Thanks. And then as you, as you go to the units that are in the upper floors, you have varying sizes as well?
Yes. We have a varying sizes. As you typically go above grade access level, you typically shrink, as I mentioned, on the third floor. Those units, you'll see, take for example, this block of units here has currently, it looks like, look at here, 10-by-15 units. When I go to the third floor, we drop a hallway in it. They're now a combination of 10 wide, 5 deep, and 10 wide, 7 and 1/2 deep. So we shrink the units as we go up, thus the quantity increases.
Yes.
But they all vary between that 10-by-20 to the 5-by-5 unit size.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, can, pull up the, if you don't mind. Let's pull up the rendering, the one from 22.
At the entrance or traveling west?
Yeah, let's get the real, you know, the glamour shot.
This one.
So, you know, I'm in graphics, so I'm thinking right now, I guess my initial question is, let me just preface it by saying, my initial question is, why the strong contrast, the dark blue, which I'm a fan of the color, but you know, it is a big statement. So I was going to say that, but then I start to think, you know, you don't have an operator. So if you got a national brand, this potentially could conflict with their branding, right? I mean, we already saw a case with a national brand. They have a color scheme. So I guess if you can just talk to what the thinking was behind the color scheme, what likelihood you are to changing it, if not for the board's sake, or a brand who might ask. Can you just...
Sure. So to start with, your first notion of how we came up with this layout was, or this scheme of colors here, was the fact that we are quite set back from the Route 22, quite screened from Route 28. We did want something that would be slightly eye-catching as you go by, but not so much so stark that it would be like, oh my God, distracting to a driver. We do have a whole bunch of plantings proposed here, which over time will grow, so the contrast of the blue and the white and the gray awnings would give a little bit of intrigue. We also thought that it would also maybe, as things degrade and the color starts to fade and dull a little bit, kind of disappear off into, you know, sky color, clouds, so it's not, again, so distracting. As far as working with a national brand, I have done several facilities where the brand comes in and we say, take it or leave it. This is the color. This is what's approved by the board. This is what has been commented on and accepted. We can't change it, and if they want to change it, then we have to come back.
And were there other ideas, or was, like you said, there were no earth colors, brown, you know, warmer?
We did look into some earth-toned colors, but we felt that that would actually mask the facility so much that nobody would know it was there once all the deciduous trees and evergreens plantings come to maturity. We don't have a huge breath opening after the plantings become mature, so. You're welcome.
I do echo the concerns that the chairman has brought up and the questions that you just received. If this board would require that the facility have earth-toned colors, would that be something that you folks would agree to?
I would discuss it with the owner and be able to get back to you.
Okay. Because it does, I mean, I understand it's commercial. I mean, my impression is feels more industrial than sort of, let's say, office commercial type. And as you know, 22, there's a lot more office. I think there's MetLife. Yes, MetLife close by. So that's something I'm...
Okay.
Regarding the storage, what type of materials would be stored here? Are there any special hazards that would be permitted to be stored in the facility?
There are restrictions on the lease, which I believe our operational testimony will testify to. The typical ones are hazardous chemicals, firearms, explosives, but I will leave the rest of the list to our testimony from operations.
And you did a preliminary code analysis from an architectural perspective?
Yes.
Okay. What would be your occupancy category for this building?
Occupancy category is S1 with a B1 accessory.
Okay. And for the outside units, could someone store their vehicle in those units?
No.
Okay.
We only provide an eight-foot-wide roll-up door, which typically you would need something wider than that to fit a vehicle in.
I think homes do come with eight-foot-wide roll-up doors.
Then I would say, then it would be specifically prohibited in the lease as far as an explosive of gas stored inside. Anyone found would be rejected and removed from the property.
Okay. In addition to gas, I mean, I think batteries should also, you know...
Again, I'll leave the list of things that are prohibited to operations testimony.
Okay. Thank you.
There's not, and this is an operational question, that there's no check and balance on these outdoor units. Someone pulls up, they pop their garage, they open their unit, they throw stuff in. At least on the inside units, I hope there would be some level of monitoring via, you know, whether it's a camera or a 24-hour person that could capture what was going into these individual units. But these outdoor units, I think it's a terrible idea.
The facility will have security cameras inside and out.
It doesn't matter. The fact that someone can pull their car up multiple times a day and load it up with whatever the hell they want, this is an operational risk. There's no check and balance to some idiot putting something in there that's dangerous to the community. There's none. At least when you walk in, there's the ability to capture that person on a camera, or hopefully a person that's working there, walking the hallway, can see someone physically bring a unit in. And frankly, also, you know, how much can you fit through a door versus how much can you fit through a garage door is a different calculation. They look bad. Operationally, I think they're a risk. I think the fact that you don't have a nationwide tenant giving you a policy and procedure manual here, I think limits that. And frankly, that was the nice part about our last case, is that we did have a national operator with a track record that had 26 facilities. They brought their CEO in, and he talked about it, and they had no outdoor loading. Everything had to come in through the doors. I think it's a risk. I think it's a risk that's manageable, and frankly, I think it's a risk that our fire marshal is going to have something to say about.
Then our testimony from operations will be hopefully able to quell some of your concerns, sir.
All right. Other board questions?
I have a question for him.
Please.
How many total storage units do you have on all three floors?
How many outdoor or total?
When you add up all three floors, how many storage units are there?
Total quantity of units through the facility is 755.
Okay. So like, you know, if people come there once a month, how many people do you expect them to be coming during the daytime?
I'll leave that to operations. I know that in her outline, she is prepared to answer that question. From my experience, it is quite low. But I'll leave the specifics up to our operations testimony.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
Your intention is to build this building even if you don't have a tenant yet?
Correct.
So what if it stays vacant for five years?
Once we know where the direction the project is going, we're going to enter into a management agreement with an operator, with the applicant's going to own the asset.
Right, but it could be years down the road.
It won't be years down the road, sir. Once we know what we're dealing with as far as what kind of building may be approved by the board, then we can go out to market.
You're going to market based on whatever gets, potentially gets approved, then?
It's not...it's the chicken-or-egg scenario. To go to a management company, to ask them to manage an asset that has not been approved is, in our experience, premature.
Okay.
Why did you feel the need to put those drive-up bays? And the last application that we approved, our understanding, particularly for the limited number of parking spaces and the limited use that was articulated to us, those things were not necessary. So why are they necessary in this project? Because they do represent a very small number of the overall units that you guys have, which would almost seem insignificant compared to this large number of units. So why even have them?
We can have the operations person speak to that.
Okay, that's fine. And the only other question I have is, what would this building look like if it actually conformed to the FAR in this zone?
It would look like this as far as the volume.
Yeah.
It's the fact that we have intermediary floors, which puts us over the FAR. The volume is conforming. It's the fact that we have, say, a second floor on there that makes us over.
So it would be one story shorter?
No, it would be actually...
The volume's compliant.
Are you saying because you have a basement?
I'm sorry, say it again, sir.
Are you saying because you have a basement counts toward your FAR?
No.
It's not. It's driven by the number of floors within the building, not the building height. Obviously, the building could be taller. You could have...
I don't think he's asking about the height. He's asking about the FAR.
What would the building look like if it conformed to a .3...
3...
3.6, right? That's a lot of...
And I'm saying that it could look just like this. There just wouldn't be, say, the second floor in there. I can still have a 20-foot-tall ceiling height, 21-foot-tall ceiling height. I just wouldn't have that second floor in there. The volume, what you see on the screen, is compliant.
Just to clarify from an FAR perspective, that could be true, although not likely, to have a 20-foot ceiling in a self-storage building. The building would be about 40,000 square feet less. So if one of these floors is...I don't know if they put the floor area...
40,190 square feet per floor on this first and second.
So it would be one floor of the units less. It would be approximately...
It would be 20 feet high instead of 30 feet.
But that's if you take off the floor. I'm saying the exterior wall, the volume...
I understand. I'm... But you wouldn't build with 20-foot ceilings, right? There's no need for that. So if it was to conform, it would be a 20-foot building. It would be the same, it would have the same footprint.
It could be reduced in height, but by your zoning ordinance, it wouldn't need to be.
It could also be increased in height and shrunk in floor area. There are ways that...that's what floor area ratios are.
I understand.
Yeah. No, I'm just trying to clarify.
If this were to...yeah.
It would look different.
Right.
If it was to function as a self-storage building and be compliant, it would look very different from what's proposed, in my opinion.
That's what I was asking. Would it look the same? What would it look like? And we're saying it would look, it would be about a 20-foot building. It could look the same, but same footprint, but...
Top off a store.
Take off a store.
Correct.
Maybe for self-storage, but if you did a health club, for example, you'd have a larger, taller building at two floors.
Right, but this is self-storage.
But we're talking about building massing, not use.
I think he's asking...
About your application.
I think he's asking for within the context of this application for this use, not for a different use, but for the use that's being requested, what would this building look like at a compliant FAR?
And to answer that question, it would not be a full 10 feet down. It would probably be roughly about a five-foot decrease in height, because we have done, you know, 14-foot ceiling heights and had lockers above the eight-foot units. As long as we keep it below 12 foot in height for the storage unit's ceiling, so we could have an eight-foot and a four-foot locker above, we can do that, and we'd still have a good ceiling height on top of that. So it wouldn't be a full 10 feet off, but it could be five.
All right. Anyone else? We're professionals.
Start. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do echo some of the board's recommendations in relation to the architecture. In my original review memo that was dated March 17th of this year, I did, you know, provide additional recommendations about the building design. I think that the faux-glazing windows were added on, but not much else was changed or addressed as far as the commentary about it looking like a warehouse. I do suggest, and I know that this commentary has been provided for other reasons, but that the applicant review the detailed architectural changes that were made to the self-storage facility that was approved by use variance down on Route 22 in Donahue, because I think the board had very good input, and the applicant listened to that. And I just, I have them upside-by-side on my screen before the chairman even brought up a comment to see the stark difference in the building materials used, the massing of the building, and how all of those factors lead to the way the building appears. And I do believe that as proposed in both the color, the material, the architectural features, it doesn't do much to help with the building massing, which I think in the context of the residences across Route 28 and just the actual nature of Route 28, as well as this portion of Route 22, I understand that the intent is to make this building stand out from an advertising perspective, but there are other ways to do that that don't have to include the entirety of the building. If you look at that other building that was approved, yes, it does have more visible exposure off of Route 22, but many self-storage facilities now will use colored signs or a brighter color sign. In that case, they used yellow color to contrast the red brick. They used a parapet height that extended above the top of the roof line in only one portion, so that that could be a place where the sign could be, so it would stand out. Those kind of shadow boxes of showing the unit doors behind it, which have a color to them that might be brighter than the building, stand out in relation to the more natural building materials. And I think all of those things need to be considered for something, particularly in the context of this site. Yes, it's on, it's in a commercial zone, but I think the fact that, you know, our ordinances do describe the sensitivities between non-residential and residential zones, particularly when it comes to landscaping, but I think it needs to be integrated into the building design also. So I hope that the applicant will consider some of those changes that I had brought up in the original review memo that talk about how we can break up building massing and take the board's commentary about materials and design seriously in its review of the architectural design. As far as the garage roll-up doors, are those proposed to be climate-controlled?
No.
So they will not be climate-controlled? The roll-up doors, in my experience, are more reminiscent of how storage facilities used to be. They were one-story, more garage-like. They had, basically, all of the storage units were outdoor roll-up doors and were not climate-controlled. And what you would see in some of those and still see, and I've seen it firsthand, is those can be used for less traditional storage, like a homeowner or someone who's downsizing or just moving somewhere else and storing their things or storing things for a loved one. And contractors, people, plumbers, repair guys, businesses of that nature, may store additional equipment. Is that proposed to be allowed, or is there any way to restrict that in this type of use or from an operational perspective?
Can you clarify equipment, please?
That'll be something our operator will speak to.
Operations? Okay, thank you. I'll take care...I'll hold that question. As far as the equipment for the building, will it be roof-mounted?
The HVAC equipment?
Yes.
Yes.
And is there...it's hard to tell from the architectural drawings. Is there screen...is the parapet proposed to screen that roof-mounted equipment?
I'm moving over to the elevations where I can zoom in on the heights. So if you look over here, our roof deck to the lowest point of our parapet is 30 inches. We have an additional foot at each of these colored volumes. And as we approach the tower element to the corner, we have an additional foot, I believe, being that we're set 10 feet back, and with the grade change, they should not be visible from the neighboring properties. But they are not required to be at a certain location on the roof. 10 feet is the minimum in order for safety and maintenance. We can move them 20 feet in in order to prevent them being visible. Oftentimes, these are only five-ton units, not the massive HVAC rooftop equipments that you see on hospitals or schools or, you know, big old warehouses. They're more five-ton residential condenser units on the roof.
Okay. Can you go to the sheet following this one?
Give me one second. Bear with me getting back to full screen here. Good.
Can you describe the different, the floor elevations, even just on any of them of the diagram, showing the height of the roof deck to the parapet?
As far as going over these elevations here?
Correct. What's the...can you just describe what the roof deck is and what the parapet height represents?
So the highest parapet point on our tower elements is five feet above the roof deck.
Okay. So what you just described is one foot in the render, the colorized elevation. Is that another foot higher than that, or is five feet the highest?
I'm going to go back to the elevations where I can show that, okay?
Please, thank you.
So this, at the office location, is a pretty good representation of that. So this elevation markers here mimic exactly what you saw on the previous page. If you go over this way, you'll see that the colored volumes are a foot down...the CMU is a foot down from the colored volumes. And I don't have the elevation marker there, but I should have it on this one. And we're 18 inches lower from the highest parapet point to the colored volumes. So we're 30 inches from the CMU to the highest parapet, and the CMU is 30 inches from the roof deck, totaling five feet.
Totalling five feet. Our ordinance does require or only permit a three-foot parapet above the roof line, so I think additional variance relief would be required for the five-foot request. And that's under the definition of building height, I believe. So I believe that'd be additional variance relief required.
Is that an accroachment into the allowable building height, or that's regardless?
Regardless. It's just under the definition for building height. It's a parapet is allowed up to three feet. We just had a recent application for a Starbucks where they had to request the relief for a four-foot parapet.
Interesting.
And as far as the layout of the units, I know that you described some of the typical sizes. There were some very unusually sized units, some triangular-shaped ones, that I don't think the dimensions necessarily represent the actual...like, there's a 10 by 5, but it's triangular, so that seems impossible. Is the number of units described intended to be the maximum number possible, or is it representative of actually what some of these units might look like?
The...I'm sorry, are the numbers of showing the size on the floor plan accurate to what the size of the unit is?
Well, that for one. Are those accurate, 10 by 5 triangular unit?
I'm going to zoom in on that one just to address that first, and if you don't mind, we'll dive further, deeper into your question.
Sure.
So I think this one here is similar but slightly different. It shows a 5 by 5 triangular unit.
Yes.
That's because the area inside of this is 25 square feet. So marketing-wise, it's a 5 by 5.
25 cubic feet?
Square feet.
That's 25 square feet? Okay. Okay. Understood.
And I'm sorry, but was the rest of the question you had?
That kind of clarifies it. I didn't know if the breakup of these units was meant to be more demonstrative of... I didn't know if the breakup of these units was meant to be more demonstrative of how many you could fit in and in reality, because they're so small or unusually sized, that they would end up being kind of morphed into another unit. And the request was really a total number of units in line with the use variance rather than maybe the actual that may be in the future if they got, if they got merged together or something.
Our intention, this would be the layout.
Okay, okay. I don't think I have anything else for this witness at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, actually, no, I do, I'm sorry. Just, I forgot my question from before to the, to the engineer. In looking at the elevation, the elevation, the colorized rendering for the view looking east fro, to Route 28, I believe.
This one?
Yes, that one.
Okay.
The, there was a number of questions about the landscaping, the landscape plan on the engineering set. And, you know, I know I raised a few questions and comments and recommendations to the engineer to look at that landscape plan, but the landscape, was this based off of exactly what the landscape plan provided from the engineering site plan?
Yes, this was a combination of creative, using a combination of the existing tree plantings for those that are remaining, the proposed tree plantings, and has been reviewed by Bowler's landscape team for accuracy.
Okay. And I think my comment before was, the engineering plan looks, looks very robust, right? The tree canopies are all meeting, the trees are all, you know, like 10, 10, 20 feet on center, and these ones appeared much more sparse in comparison to the 2D plan. So, you know, I think my comment still stands to the, to the engineer and to the applicant that I believe the, the landscape plan should continue to be looked at, particularly in line with the ordinance, but also in line with the residents' comments about the screening and what the, you know, the actual intent of the screening is for this property.
I do want to address that and reiterate that these are day-one plantings, so that each of the trees that are proposed have significant growth over the first three years. A 12-foot trellis tree will be 15 feet in the first three years. An eight-foot evergreen tree will be 16 feet in the first three years. So although, yes, this is, may appear sparse, no one's going to plant 20-foot trees day one.
We appreciate the comment, we'll look at it.
Yeah, and I, I agree, and I understand that those are.
When you look at the engineering plan, it looks like a wall of trees and it looks like you're fully buffered and you're not gonna see anything, and the reality is, this is what you're getting. And even more so to Mr. Banga's point, you know, there's a greenery area that, you know, it's basically dead, that I want to make sure that you're not getting credit for. And I think it should be the linear feet and not just the, what do you wanna call it, the greenage that's existing already.
Yeah. And I think my comments are also related to the, the design of the landscaping. There's a small line of shrubs right up to the evergreens, the ever, so it doesn't look very natural. It looks.
Yeah, you can always do more. And, you know, I, I think, and I repeated this at the last meeting, you get the benefit of our hard work of six meetings, sitting with an angry room of people. And I don't know why you're not using that. Go back to that meeting, listen to the six meetings. It's on YouTube. Listen to what these people said. Listen to the, the building materials the board recommended Catherine and Bill put together. It's a good application. It, it started in, as a bad application, and it became a good one. And literally, at the last meeting, nobody spoke. All the, the neighbors were happy. And that's a good project, when you coexist and you're a good neighbor. Frankly, I don't see it yet. I don't think you're there. I'm glad we have another meeting to work it out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry.
A few, real quick?
Yes.
The, can you go to the, go to the elevation rendering that you were on previously?
The 2D?
The 2D. This may be a little nitpicky, but I just want to clarify, on the south elevation, on the left side of the south elevation where you have the parapet height at 179, is that a typo compared to the roof height of 168?
Yes, that, that definitely is a typo, yes.
Is that, is that, what should that be?
The roof deck plus 30 inches should be at, was that gonna be 171?
You make a note to correct that?
Absolutely, I will.
While we're on that, that rendering, I see that you have a combination of, in, in this current design, you have a combination of faux windows and then display windows.
Correct.
Starting with the faux windows, are, are they gonna emit any interior light or are they strictly just a facade treatment?
They are facade treatment, surface applied to the, to the building.
Okay, so nothing from the inside comes out of them?
No wall penetration.
With the display windows, though, at the, I guess the north end, well, I guess it's at the, it's at the, the short sides of the building, right?
Yep.
On the west and the east side?
East.
Correct.
Okay.
Those will emit interior light, correct?
Yes, so that, they do have interior lights to illuminate those, those display doors, as the planner spoke to before about the other application, they used color in the past.
Right.
We are showing them here as, as white, but there will be light inside of that, yes.
And will, will those lights, those interior lights, have the ability to be dimmed after closing?
They certainly can.
They can? Okay. I'm looking at my notes from the March meeting, and I see that I wrote down that there was gonna, with the lighting design now, that there was gonna be no exterior wall-mounted or building-mounted facade lights. Is that correct? Because when I look at your plan here, it looks like I see some wall packs around the perimeter.
We are required, sorry, continue.
Did I miswrite something or, or did I not recall what the testimony at that time was?
I did not testify at that hearing.
Right.
We are required to have emergency, or lighting on the exterior for emergency purposes. One-foot candle all exits and to the exit of the property. I will confirm that with the lighting design of the property to make sure they coordinate.
Okay. And the only other question I have is to the street renderings, the 3D renderings?
Yeah.
We talked a lot about that existing buffer area that may not be in the best health, that I think we also have established is mostly deciduous trees.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have the ability to show what that, that view or even from Bogart would look like in the winter months when those trees don't have any foliage?
I can see what I can do.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, members of the public, you have questions?
Hi there, just get your name and address.
Hi, my name's Christopher Bowden, B-O-H-D-A-N, and I live at 18 Bogart Drive, obviously in Bridgewater. I live on Bogart Drive. That does not look like any office building I've ever seen in my life. That is a warehouse. As you mentioned earlier, that is a warehouse, okay? This is what I gotta look outside when I go to walk my dog every day. That's a warehouse.
Mr. Bowden, do you have a question?
My question is, is that ugly? You think that's ugly?
I do not.
Oh, okay. Well, I guess we, we'll agree to disagree. The other question is, as you mentioned at the last meeting about reaching out to the, the residents that live in the area. I haven't been reached out to yet. Be nice if that happened. Thank you. All right, sure.
Indri Benga, 376 State Route 28. I'm curious if you know the, the building that's on 390 US 22?
I do not.
You don't? Okay, I mean, I can tell you. It's a sunrise of Bridgewater.
Okay.
It's an assisted facility, assisted living facility. Do you know what the color scheme of that is?
I believe from what I've seen of a Google Earth image, it's earth tones.
Earth tones, yes. The current building that's on the Tectonic Lot right now, do you know what color that is?
I do not.
No, you don't. It's also earth tones.
Okay.
So, you know, what, what you have here is a monstrosity. It looks like a warehouse. I'll get to a question. Like, you know, our chairman has said and multiple board members, I'm curious if, based on not only the homes that are in the area, but then also the assisted facility, the assisted living facility, as well as the building, if, if that was taken into consideration when you put this color scheme together?
No, like I said before, it was related to the, being able to grab someone's attention driving by. These roads are, you know, 40 mile an hour roads, 50 mile an hour roads with limited sightlines, and as well as, you know, blending into the sky as the dull colors progress throughout weathering.
Okay, I disagree. The foliage that you mentioned on Route 22 and then also, that is complete AI BS. I can tell you right this second, by going onto Google Maps, it is, you can see directly through, and a lot of those trees, like I mentioned already, are dead. I would request the board to mandate that they take a true imagery of actually what's on Route 28 and then what's actually on Route 22, because when I look at this from Google, from Google, you can go on, you, it makes, it looks nothing like.
You're, you're on Street View? Is that what?
I'm on Street View. It looks nothing like what was presented here. Nothing. So I don't know what kind of like app you guys used, AI, whatever it was.
Google Street View.
I don't think it was Google Street View.
I used that, but again.
None of those trees look exactly like that. Those are all healthy trees. They don't look like that. You can go right now on Google, on Street View, they don't look anything like that. There's fallen trees over. It looks nothing like what you have on the screen right there. So I would request that the board ask the applicant to actually make it true to life instead of what is actually being shown here, because it's false and misleading, and it doesn't do justice to any of the, the residents in the nearby area. It was also requested or discussed that, you know, what is this gonna look like from a second-floor home? You're welcome to come to my house and actually take a picture, or any of the residents who are here.
You can't grant access to the other residents, but, but that's important that, and I know that's why you didn't do it, because you don't necessarily have access, but, but why don't you guys talk after this meeting in 14 minutes and give them permission to come take a photo?
So, we are on an elevation, I'm surrounded by my neighbors, we're actually elevated from the street by about seven feet on a hill, and then our home is actually right above that. And that's not just me, it's also my fellow neighbors as well. And they're gonna be able to see this over the tree line, based on, you know, the renderings at least that, that have been shown so far, because the trees are dead.
Indy, what's your address again?
376 State Route 28.
So why don't we ask for a rendering from 376?
Yeah, I think that would be fair. And I would, you know, ask any of my Bogart, you know, neighbors as well if, if they felt it was, like I said, I think the, the AI renderings of the, the foliage are misleading, are very incorrect. So, you know, my request to the applicant is to make it true to form, you know, based on, based on what's actually there. The other item that I wanted to ask on was, is the trees that are, that were used in the renderings, are those all the ones that are currently there or are those also proposed with the exception of the ones that you planted?
I'm sorry, can you restate the question?
So, so the, the trees, you know, the, the larger trees?
Mature trees.
Right.
Okay.
Those are all the ones that are currently, that, that you guys have perceived that are currently there?
Yes.
And that are currently healthy?
Yes.
Okay. And the one thing that I didn't see in the renderings, which Ms. Armec had, had mentioned, was in the 2D model, you know, and again, it could be at the, after three years or five years, that they're, they're squished together, right? I mean, I have, I can tell you, I have arbovitae's, and what is the, you know, what is the expected width for the ones that are shown right here on Bogart? Because I, I don't think that they're gonna be able to fill that gap based on kind of like what was shown in the 2D versus what's shown in the 3D here.
I don't have that information.
So I think that's really important for us to know, because if we're trying to creep consistency based on the 2D rendering, that you guys should come back and actually be able to show us how wide these things are gonna be, how tall they're actually gonna be, and how long that's actually gonna take.
Are you asking for renders at, say, five-year growth rate?
Sure. You know, I don't think there's any expectation, if this was to, to get passed, what is that gonna look like? I think in the very beginning, based on what's showing here, I don't believe having my own arbovitae's, that you're gonna be able to fill a gap that's four feet on both sides. It's just not realistic. So one thing that I didn't mention the first time around was, like we talked about, in the Route 28 buffer, whatever you wanna call it, that has all dead trees, if you're gonna be planting these trees on, these arbo, what are they called? What do you have, arbovitae's, right?
I'm sorry, to our to the west?
Yeah, like what are those ones?
You know, why is a, oh, Leland cypress.
It is, it is a type of arboviti? And, and how, how tall is that kid?
Planted at eight feet and grows 30 inches per year.
Okay, so what's the, what's the, the total that it will be expected at, at maturity?
Honestly, I'm not sure maturity is. I was provided information stating that about three years, it should be 16 feet, about five years, it should be about 21 feet.
21 feet? Okay, and the building is?
Mr. Chairman, if we need to have the engineer come back up to answer that question, we can sort of do that.
I don't think any of us are tree experts. I mean, we, I, I think he is an expert in architecture, he can take a ballpark, and I think Mr. Banga would understand that no one's gonna know how these trees are gonna grow.
Right, but I think, well, the point that I'm getting to is if the building is 31, which I think you have attested to, right? If this is gonna only get up to, to 21 feet, that there's still gonna be significant visibility based on, which I think was counter, counter testimony to Mr., to Matt, to, you know, previously.
Matt did testify that the elevation of Bogart is at 128. Our elevation, I'm sorry where my note went.
But I think the elevation is incorrect, because that's actually on, you know, when you're actually standing on. I think what you're not taking into consideration is the homes and the elevation of the homes. So everybody looking from the second floor is gonna be looking at this monstrosity. Yes. With all due respect, you're applying for a zoning, which is not in the, but you do need a variance to put your, to put your warehouse here.
Now, now Indy, at the end of the case, you know this better than all of us. You can come back and present your own photographs and your own visual perspectives, and, you know, by all means, that'll carry weight with the board as well.
I think, no, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate, you know, your sentiment. I think one thing that I did wanna, Mr. Kulik had, had mentioned, you're Mr. Kulik, right? No, you're Mr. Gieske, had mentioned, you know, I would like to, you know, within the confines of this application, again, the FAR is nearly double. I think you mentioned that, you know, potentially it could be five or 10 feet lower, you know, based on, you know, what, whatever that, that dynamics needs to look like. I think, you know, based on what you mentioned about, one, the tree coverage, if it's only gonna grow up to 21 feet, if you're at 31 feet, that extra five, that makes a difference. That it makes a difference to the cost, to the, to the neighbors, it makes a difference to the overall community, and especially, it makes a difference if we're not gonna be, not gonna have to see this, you know, potential warehouse from our, from our front doors. Now, you could say, okay, well, I'm taking the vantage point from the intersection, but again, I would like to see an FAR that's closer to, or actually at FAR. Again, you are applying for a D1 in a C3 zone, and that's a pretty big deal, you know?
Mr. Chairman, I certainly appreciate the, the member of the public's comment.
Indy, you gotta have a question.
Okay, yeah. Well, I'm done with my questions.
Turned our way to summation, and we, I could go to summation, but nobody wants to hear me right now, and I understand where the case needs to go from a modification set. So building mass itself, again, the building coverage complies, impervious coverage complies, the setback on 28 complies.
So building mass itself, again, the building coverage complies, impervious coverage complies, the setback on 28 complies. The massing of the building as it presents itself to the environment is not the issue. It's the number of floors within the building that's the issue. So to resolve the FAR, it could result in a larger building or a smaller building. As the chairman talked about economics in, well, a comment he had about ways that we go to analyze things from a financial perspective. If the project gets to a certain point where it's so small, it's not economically viable anymore. And then we look for a more intensive use group in order to make the project viable. So from our perspective, what we're presenting is the most muted form of commercially viable development for this site. There are other terms of, other forms of development that could be constructed on this property that would have a larger footprint, a larger massing effect, more trips, et cetera.
Well, Mr. Banga knows that better than anyone. He was part of the, the original stop the quick check.
I mean, we could, we, you know, we can talk about, you know, what's permitted in a C3 zone, and, you know, we wouldn't be having this conversation today if that was the case.
But the architect didn't talk about that, so.
Right.
We're talking about architectural testimony, gotta ask a question.
And I understand.
If the bill, if the project gets to a certain point, then we have a conversation about a different type of devarance. Or going before the planning board for a different type of permitted use that's larger in scale. So I appreciate trying to respond to concerns, but they have to be practical in nature.
I'm pretty sure everything that I've mentioned so far has been practical in nature, but I will yield for now, so.
Free to disagree.
Yeah.
I'm just telling you that there's only so far the needle can move before it becomes impractical.
Understood.
Any other questions in the public on the architectural testimony? Just get your name and address again for the record, please.
Kethan Thakar, AD Shephardot, Bridgewater. My question is, how many units gonna be storage units?
Total in the building?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, total.
Total in the building, 755 are currently planned.
750, okay. And it's 35 feet height, or 30 feet height?
So the average height as calculated as per the zoning is 31.31 feet.
Someone mentioned about anything hazardous material stored in, and you may not have a monitor, somebody what's going in. If that 31 or 35 feet building goes on a fire, what do you think, how long it takes to get to Bogart that fire? Bogart Avenue, Bogart Drive?
I don't know, I'm, I'm not sure if I followed the question, you talk about as an occupant getting out of the building?
Building, if your storage facility catch fire.
Okay.
Bogart Drive is less than 100 feet.
Okay.
So if that community catch fire, and if wind is high, there are 3100 homes between Ventor Weathode and 28.
I don't know that answer, that would be almost.
All those homes can catch that fire.
By building code, any building that is separated by greater than 30 feet is not required to have a fire rating, fire rating on the wall. We are greater than the 30 feet, so none of the walls are required to be fire rated.
Why don't you build upon some of the safety measures built into the building?
Sure. So as I mentioned before, there is a fully applicable fire sprinkler inside the building, wet sprinklers inside the climate-controlled area, and dry sprinklers inside of the non-climate-controlled area. There are two fire egress stairs that run all floors and exit to grade with a fire rating around those, as required by code. All of our travel distances are less than the 250 linear feet that are required by code. There are fire extinguishers, no great, no greater travel distance to 75 feet from any point inside the building. Fully enunciated fire alarm, and there will be a BDA test to, if there is a need for that, which benefits the communication of firemen when they're in the building. That'll be tested during construction as required, but there are numerous fire safety requirements that will be met.
If 750 units is occupied and rented, and if 20% people using every day, that would be 200 plus cars in and out every day, 200 to 300, depending on the traffic. Is that gonna be any problem entering or from 22 and exiting?
The operational use will be testified to later, but the use per day, or the trips per day is much lower.
We, we have a traffic engineer, sir, that'll be able to respond to that question.
I see, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions in the public? All right, it's 9:55, I think we're gonna call it a night. What do we have next for you guys? Maria, what date were we thinking to bring them back?
I think the next available date that we have is October 21st.
October 20?
Sorry, 28th.
28? All right, our next available date, October 28th, 2025.
We'll see you then, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Mr. Oliver, given the.
Just give the full announcement to the people in the public. So for the members of the public, this meeting's being adjourned. It will continue in this room on September 28th at 7:00 PM.
I heard October.
I'm sorry.
October 28th.
October 28th at 7:00 PM, and there'll be no further notices from the applicant.
Okay, and for this board, our next meeting is July 22nd, 7:00 PM. We have Germonk Oil first up, and then we're gonna do Cafe Amelia, 7:00 PM, July 22nd. This room, a motion to adjourn, please. That was Mr. Waddely.
Second.
And that was Mr. Gieske. Thank you, everyone, have a great night.